Pennington County Commission Meeting to Order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Holloway.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any changes on the agenda? Not the Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Your second?
Second.
Motion at a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Not those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we move to the consent agenda and we'll ask Holly Hennes to read those items into the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial items. Quickly, the consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, I have placed the following items on the consent agenda. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June 19th, 2012. To approve the vouchers totaling $175,703.84. To approve a resolution to discharge county liens of deceased and unknown individuals totaling $67,514.29. To approve the Minnehaha County Jail bed per diem contract. To schedule a public hearing on July 17th, 2012 for a general fund supplement SP-12-018 for a county fire fund operating budget. And to approve the S.T., excuse me, South Dakota Department of Transportation Railroad Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services.
Does anyone wish any of those items pulled from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to pull anything from the agenda. I just want to add just one little thing to item seven in that, um, unknown individuals and the discharge of county liens. Some of these liens date back to 1940, so it's time to clear the books.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not the Chair entertain a motion.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Your second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we move to item 11, which is a Dakota Point Fire Update. Is there someone here to present that?
Mr. Slepnikoff, I believe wants to.
Fire Information Officer, I believe, is down in the Elk Mountain area. So, I can give you a little briefing. Right now, we're down to just two IA initial attack engines off the Mystic District that are patrolling the area, checking for spots. The rest of the engines and the crews were all sent down to the fires down around Newcastle. So, we basically have a small, very small crew there right now. We are also closing off Dakota Point's road in there indefinitely because we've been having problems with the public trying to get into the fire area, both on the road and by boats coming in off Sheridan Lake and then climbing up and jumping off the rocks in the fire area. So, we're going to keep that closed probably indefinitely until we can get a better handle on it. Any questions on that?
Any questions or comments? Are you also prepared to do item 12?
Which is?
The Pennington County, um, excuse, excuse me, no, I, perhaps you can address it, but we do have item 12, which is a Pennington County Burn Ban Resolution relating to Ordinance 632 Campgrounds and Campfires. And I believe you folks have.
Right. I requested the county commissioners if they would support the Forest Service in putting, we're going to effectively initiate the order as of eight o'clock this morning for putting a ban on all campfires in the Black Hills National Forest, both in dispersed and developed areas. We just can't have those occurring anymore right now with the way the weather conditions are. We've had several problems in our campgrounds where people have left fires unattended and drove off, and you can't do that. So, and we're not getting any support from our camp hosts, from the concessionaire. So, we've decided that we have to close those fires down. And we also have some campgrounds that are under jurisdiction of the Forest Service that we're also going to be closing those down because they're out like in Black Fox. They're quite a ways out, and if we get a fire out there, we don't have the resources to get there. So, requesting support from the county to, for us, we're going to initiate it. We'd like your support in it.
Jay, would you care to respond?
We, we do have a, I don't know if we're at that point in the agenda where the resolution, the proposed resolution is up or not, but one of the questions I had, I guess, um, a ban in Pennington County, of course, would be countywide and wouldn't, it would be outside, you know, necessarily just the national forest. So, I'm assuming to some extent, the county ban and what you're describing would be redone, that they'd be on top of each other because you're already banning.
On the national forest.
Right.
But off the national forest.
So, I guess.
Jay, I can, you know, also, I could also talk about the ban off private land.
So, I'm not sure if we're set on the agenda for that resolution. Maybe somebody could.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then what you have in front of you is a Pennington County resolution for that exact purpose. I've drafted it in to be consistent with our current burn ban ordinance. And as you may recall, I think you also maybe have a copy of Ordinance 632, which is our burn ban ordinance. As you may recall, campgrounds, private, commercial, state managed, it doesn't matter, were exempt from our original burn ban. In other words, you could have campground fires that essentially would fall under the definition of an open fire without any regulation. Trying to be helpful and consistent with what's being requested from law enforcement and fire suppression agencies and whatnot. I drafted this because in our ordinance, there's a specific reference to allow the county commission by resolution to institute a burn ban with regard to the campgrounds and campfires. I also tied that in to be consistent with the other regulation in our current ordinance to be tied in to the fire danger index. So, the campground fires would be banned if the fire index reaches very high or extreme. It would have to drop below the very high, which means high, in order to have one. Felt that would be consistent and in balance with the other restrictions that are currently in the ordinance. With that, I guess I would take any, and it would be, the other thing I guess I'd point out is that given the emergency nature of it, we also have by state statute the authority to, with one reading of a resolution, to have it be effective immediately rather than waiting the additional 20 days post-publication before its effectiveness. So, if approved today, it would be effective instantly.
Do we have a draft resolution, another one somewhere?
It should have been in your separate file. It was not in the package.
Oh, well, okay. So, I'm getting caught up here.
And I can read, um.
Yeah, this is an emergency resolution regulating open burning campgrounds. So, Jay, if you would proceed to inform the audience what we're doing.
Mr. Chair, before he reads that, if I could just ask a question.
Certainly.
Jay, I know you've given us an opinion that apparently we don't have the, the power to control discharge of fireworks after today.
Correct.
Through the end. But it seems like the rest of the counties around us are exercising some kind of authority to ban it in their jurisdictions. So, um, whether we got the authority or not, I'd like to see us add to the resolution the banning of discharging of fireworks in Pennington County.
Mr. Chair, I also have a, um, when we were going through the vacation home rental ordinance development, there was a lot of concern about people having campfires, and they are allowed in the ordinance. Do we?
No, they're allowed in campgrounds, permitted campgrounds. Otherwise, they'd be considered open fire.
But I, but I think in the vacation home rental, it specifically says that they can have, have a campfire in a enclosed.
Well, and you can, by our ordinance, you can still have, like, the fire pits.
But this is still covered, is what I'm saying.
Unless, unless Dan can tell me there's.
We, we had a lot of controversy about that.
Yeah, Jay, I can cover that if you want.
Okay.
State law, that is already dealing with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
I believe that has to do with the permitted fire rings and stuff in private property by the, and they're permitted by the state of South Dakota, and I believe those permits have been rescinded while this situation is in place. I'm just wondering, has this, now, Mr. Slepnikoff, with, with the Forest Service's actions, does that take care of the campgrounds like, that are Sheridan Lake packed, so the state doesn't have to get involved in that, your control in that area?
Federal land.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
I also know that we have approval from our Washington office that the Black Hills is now considered a severity class. That means that we can try to get other resources in here to support us, but the chances with Colorado and Utah, Montana burning up, chances of us getting additional engines and crews in here is probably fairly remote. So, anything you can do to support the Forest Service, because there's a lot of private land within, intermingled, within the Black Hills National Forest that are campgrounds, such as Raptor J and all those big campgrounds, they've got the same kind of issues that we do for fire, so.
And just, just along those lines, right now, under our ordinance, open fire means any outdoor fire, including a campfire, that is not contained within a fully enclosed fire box. And so, it goes beyond the campground. I mean, it reaches into the, the private.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Chairman.
Yes.
I, I would take the opportunity, at least so we can discuss it further, if we want to, to make a motion to approve the Pennington County resolution regulating open burning in campgrounds, plus because we have the authority to make regulations for the public health and safety to add a total ban on fireworks in Pennington County.
I'll second that.
Third, fourth, fifth?
We have a motion at a second, and, um, do you have the amendment?
Uh, hold on.
Jay, Jay, do you?
I, I will need to make that amendment in this resolution. I can do that, but I want to make sure Karen has it.
And I would like the public health and safety put in that motion.
So, in essence, you'd want the resolution underneath Pennington County resolution to read like an emergency resolution regulating open burning in campgrounds and prohibition against the use of all fireworks in the county. Something along those lines?
Based upon the county commission's authority under public, to enact ordinances and resolutions under public health and safety.
Mr. Chair, that's still my point, though. When you put in campgrounds, I, I am still concerned that the folks who have vacation home rentals, that was a big deal to have their camp, ability for people to have campfires. I, I would, can't we just say campfires anywhere?
And I think that Dan can speak to the vacation home, and I believe we have a representative from the state that can speak to.
Just a quick comment. They would still be required to get the appropriate permits from, and I believe it's the wildland fire suppression.
Yep.
Yes. To get a permit to have those fires even on the private property.
All right. So, it's current.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner. My name's Jim, Jim, my name is, is Jim Strain. I'm the Assistant Chief for Operations for South Dakota State Wildland Fire. I want to introduce my chief, Jay, Jay, um, Jay, Jay, Jay Esperance from, he's our Division Coordinator for South Dakota State Wildland Fire. To answer your question directly, Nancy, on this, on the situation involving what we call residential campfire per, of, of permits within the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District, our agency has a jurisdictional authority since 1941 to issue those type of burning, burning, uh, burning, burning permits. We have, I think at last count, over 500 of those across Pennington County in the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District, and it mirrors what Jay says, that people are not allowed to burn when the fire danger is high, very high, or above. The only problem is they do anyway, a lot, and especially at night. So, to answer your question specifically to the residential, those vacation homes, yeah, my agency has gone out inspected those sites, make sure they meet our standards and code, and we write a, write a, a permit with those, with those restrictions in place. Well, to work with the Forest Service, the Forest Supervisor, our boss, the Secretary of Agriculture with your South Dakota, used his authority under South Dakota State law yesterday to, as of eight o'clock this morning, all open fire, burn any sort of a, a commercial campground or campfire rings at a private residential house in Pennington County, Fall River Custer, Meter Lawrence is in the fire district. And burn barrels, commercial campgrounds, residential campfires, we have no ban those. And we will keep them banned until at that time the Forest Service lifts their, 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 their stage two restrictions. Our only issue is my firefighters are out, my guys that manage that program are out fighting fire now, and I expect them to be that way for the next two weeks. So, I, we have no way to get the word out to people out in those far, in the far, in, in the far reaches of the county like by Moon or Hill City. So, any, any publication you can give to your ordinance and our actions too would really help us out now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead, Jay, I'll yield.
If I, thank you. If I may, I'm going to attempt to, I think, address your question, Nancy, about just private fires elsewhere. In our current ordinance, which we're not changing at all, the definition of open fire means any outdoor fire, including a campfire, regardless of where it's at, that is not contained within a fully enclosed fire box or structure from which the products of combustion are emitted directly to the open atmosphere without first passing through a stacked duct or chimney. So, just a standard fire is not allowed already. Our ordinance accepted out specifically campground fires. I suppose with the idea being that campground fires, they don't want their places to burn down. They're more readily enforced and supervised, and they're usually in some kind of contained setting at each campsite and so forth. So, that's why those were accepted out. Now, we're pulling those back and prohibiting those as well by the resolution.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Slepnikoff, if you would, would you comment on the smoking restrictions and things as part of your?
It says on that stage two, uh, smoking ban, what's allowed under smoking, it's, you have to be in a building, a car, something like that. If we catch you out smoking in the open air, you're going to get cited.
Okay. Anything else you want to attach to that?
No, I just hope people realize that it is a big fire danger around here, and we're running really short on resources. A lot of our resources are still in Colorado, and, um, we need the public's support to, when we say stay out of an area, please stay out of an area.
And I, Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Yes, I get up on the soapbox just a little bit, but people need to realize that the amount of money that's being spent fighting these fires could be spent on a lot of other good items to, to help the entire public and not have to go through all of this. And not only is it the cost, apparently $970,000 just to fight the one at Crow Peak alone, but the cost of loss of life is way more than the cost of money. And I would think that people would use their good common sense not to get into this type of situation to, to cause these things to happen. I'm off my soapbox now.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I think we understand the action that's embodied in the motion, so without further discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the land exchange, and we have Michael McNeil. This is the Cane Creek Land Exchange.
Good morning. The first thing I'd like to do is, well, I'll reintroduce myself. I've been there before, but Mike McNeil, I am the ranger on the, that part of the Buffalo Gap that lies west of the Cheyenne River in Pennington County, then down into Custer and Fall River. What I'd like to do first is to introduce Alan Anderson, who is our newly hired ranger at Wall. I think effective in a couple of weeks.
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth of this month, so Alan will be the district ranger at Wall and also your point of contact there, too. So, we wanted to reintroduce. And then, though it's not on the, our agenda, I wanted to let you know that a week ago, we instigated the same restrictions that the Black Hills did on the grasslands. And so, the, that will be consistent across all Forest Service administered lands in Pennington County. So, the same restrictions. So, we're pleased that you do support those. So, with the subject that we came here for today, the Forest Service is proposing a land exchange with the, the Nature Conservancy and for ranches they own in Canata Basin for some real scattered pieces that the Forest Service has around Pennington County, Jackson County, and Fall River County. They're all small 40-acre, you know, half-section type pieces that are very difficult for us to administer. And so, we released a news release, which you have, I think, in front of you on June 22nd. We just started the NEPA process in assessing this proposal, and what we want to do was come here today and make sure you guys were aware that, and I'm sure you probably saw that if you didn't, but also answer any questions you might have, at least in terms of starting the process. Excuse me. Just a couple of, of the highlights of that, there's about 3,089 acres that TNC has in those two ranches, and we're looking at about 4,000 or so acres in the Forest Service because we have to do a value for value. It's not an acre for acre. And, and it also has to be willing seller, willing trader, that type of thing. So, that is, we're beginning that process. Again, talked about the counties there. Some of the bigger things this will allow us, again, is some of those pieces are, are not accessible by the public because they're surrounded by private. And really, in a lot of cases, makes more sense for the private owner to, to manage that themselves. Plus, it would allow us some flexibility in the Canata Basin with those extra acres there to deal with drought and some of the prey dog issues with our existing permities that are there now. So, those are a few, some of the things that we looked at when we initially look at the land exchange. But again, it's, we're just initiating the NEPA process, so we encourage the commission, if you so desire for, to give us some input on that. We'd like to have that by June 30th. That's, would make it the easiest for us to integrate, you know, the initial NEPA process, but certainly we will accept comments all the way through the process.
July 30th?
Ju, I said June, I'm sorry. July 30th. Yeah, we're in July already. Thanks, Dave.
I thought you didn't want our comments.
Yeah, I got here after the fact on that one, yeah. So, on occasion, I do that, but, so, at any rate, with that, I would actually just open it up if you have some specific questions, but.
When you talk about a land exchange and small parcels that you have isolated, who gets the small parcels?
What, what is being done at the TNC actually will be, once that exchanges, they will be the ones that sell the pieces. They're already talking to private landowners. The emphasis is to those that are actually using that piece of ground right now. And so, that's, that would be the emphasis for that. And that, again, is a TNC process. That's because they will, once we make the exchange, they become the owner, they'll turn right around and convey that then to the, to the private individuals. And I can speak specifically for a couple of mine, you know, those are existing permities that use those in our operations.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mike, um, when these revert back to the Nature Conservancy or whoever it is that these small parcels are going to go to, what governs their sale to private individuals? Is it first come, first served, or are we looking at donating these things or selling these pieces of property to people like the Sierra Club and others?
In this case, can, no, they, what's, like I say, the, the Nature Conservancy will be the immediate owner, you know, right after the exchange. They're already working out the deals because they don't want their money tied up, quite frankly. And so, they'll, they'll want to turn right around and convey those to those private landowners. So, then, you know, almost immediately, those small parcels will become, you know, private ownership. And again, emphasizing the ones that are, you know, immediately adjacent, using them at the, at the current time.
One other question, wasn't this proposed once before, um, back a few years ago? I was just dinging, dinging a bell somewhere.
This is not the first exchange over in Canata Basin. We actually had one in there a couple of years ago, that you folks were actively involved in that one. This is a new one. This is a new exchange. You know, exchanges in Canata Basin are not new in themselves. There's been quite a bit of that in the past, trying to block up some of that, that, make that a little easier, less impact, less miles of exposure, you know, or adjacent, right, private land, trying, you know, trying to reduce that, that amount of exposure, and also trying to reduce boundary fence type problems that we have, those types of things. So, again, there was one that we completed maybe a year and a half ago, I think, so, but this one is a new one.
Was everybody that's supposed to be notified of this notified in advance of what is taking place there?
Yeah, it is. And like I say, we're really in the, the initial stages of our analysis of this, and that's why the, the public release, plus we, we have a mailing list that we send notices to people that have expressed interest, you know, in these types of activities, and so we've made that kind of a notification, too. And, and again, we'll take comments all the way through the process. The June 30th is, if we get comments by then, that's how we can, it's more efficient for us to, you know. What's that? July, do it again. Must have been something about June that I really liked. I don't remember what it was. Yeah. July 30th, so. Thanks.
I have some real reservations about this, guys. I think the federal government's got their hands on enough money, enough land and enough money, and they can't really take care of what they have now. I don't know why we need to put more into it.
I can certainly appreciate that.
Especially when it comes to prey dogs and the black-footed ferret.
And that's what we're trying to deal with, part of it. And, and I would say in this case, we're actually not going to, the Forest Service won't gain necessarily because it's a value for value, like I, I discussed, because we're giving up, you know, some stuff in small scattered parcels to kind of block up what we've got. It'll make us much ea, it'll be a lot easier to develop, deal with some of the ferret and prey dog issues because that's going to allow us ability to help out some of those ranches that might be impacted by that, the specific ones impacted by it.
Somehow, I've, I've sort of lost the sequence of this, whether it's June 30th or July 30th.
And I apologize.
For a comment period. It sounds to me like you've already got the train moving, and, so how far into it are you, and, and what can anyone do to stop it?
Well, the process is, again, yeah, we have a proposal, and that's, that's what this is, is a proposed land exchange. And so, through the NEPA process, the first thing we do is we, we ask the public for some input as we start the process of analyzing the proposal, which in this case, I was just outlining for you. And so, what will happen, that'll go through the process, there will be a, that draft analysis will be given to the public for public comment. There'll be a final analysis done at that point in time, and then some, whatever it happens to be, some sort of a decision. And, and of course, federal decisions are subject to appeal.
So, from start to finish, with all this input, when does the actual exchange take place?
I, at this point in time. I, at this point in time, this is kind of a lengthy process, and we're looking at least a year out for a decision on this, you know, on the actual exchange taking place.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair. Do you have a map somewhere, you know, where the comments are? That doesn't?
Yeah, all we have, you know, with the scoping type, that, we do have the website that has the maps on it.
Okay.
And it's, it's, I'm sure it's in that.
Well, there's a comments.
Yeah, the, the very bottom, there's a website right there, and you can find the maps at that, right at the very bottom of the press release.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You're, you know, in your letter that we got here, indicate that this would allow you to better deal with, it says, acquisition of the land in the Kanata Basin to enhance black-footed ferret habitat. And so, you know, when you said you would be, the Forest Service would be better able to deal with the prairie dogs and the black-footed ferret, your goal in dealing with them is to enhance it? To have more black-footed ferret and prairie dogs?
What the goal is there, enhance it by taking some of the conflict out of it. Because when we have, you know, those, those intermingled ownership type things, and that adds that, that interface, if you will, between private and federal, you know, with encroachment problems and so, we're trying to take those away. And so that we don't, so that's what, when we talk about enhancement, we're just trying to take away some of the conflict by, in that particular area, by blocking that up.
Well, you know, if you get three thousand more acres to, to keep prairie dogs and ferrets on, once, as the, at the rate they multiply, you're, you're going to be back with the same problem you got today very shortly because they're taking over the whole area down there. I mean, I guess, if you were going to go in there and not enhance it, but decrease them, I, I might support you doing that. I, I, I think we've got too dang many prairie dogs now eating up the grasslands.
Well, then, I would say we can certainly appreciate, you know, points of view that people have. And that's the kind of input where we're saying that, you know, the county has the ability to give us, you know, as we enter the analysis part of it. And that's exactly where we're at the very beginning. And that's why, you know, we wanted to make sure you folks were aware, you know, right at the very start of this thing, you know, so that you have adequate chance for input on it, so.
Thank you.
We will more than likely give you some.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I was just going to ask, if there's anyone in the audience who wished to comment.
I had to add something before, if I may, before she comes up. First of all, my philosophy about prairie dogs is, is my two-twenty swift and ashes to ashes and dust to dust. Second of all, will these, will these areas become restricted areas? Then because you're trying to read black-footed ferrets in them, they're going to keep the people out, stop the prairie dog shooting, that kind of thing? Where are we at?
I would suspect that the answer to the shooting part, that would, that would become part of that, that shooting ban right there, just specifically for the ferret area. But, you know, there are surrounding grasslands there now that have that same restriction. So I, I can answer that question very.
What about just access to the property for, let's say, hiking and things on that order? That is.
It's still going to have, there's still going to be public access for that. You know, there's not, we're not proposing any kind of a closure to public access at all.
But, Mr. Chair, what about grazing permits or anything like that, that currently? I mean, you mentioned that they were going to, that National, or Nature Conservancy would sell those properties. So what happens is the people who had the grazing rights for that piece of property, if they can't buy it, then they lose their ability to graze anything, they're out.
For that particular piece, a lot of times, it's like a forty mixed in with, you know, four or five sections, yeah. But again, that emphasis, and I know TNC's working hard on that, is that, you know, the people that are currently using it are, are the top priority for, for purchasing. So we have listed a lot of, of properties, we have a lot of these scattered things. And, you know, if those conditions aren't met, we'll, we'll move to a different part, to a different piece, so that we can meet all those conditions of, you know, because I, sometimes people don't have the ability maybe to do that, or, you know.
That's what I'm saying. A lot of times, they lease because they can't.
But we are, but we are looking at those conditions, and, and that's why we have quite a few more acres here to begin with than, than what's, than what you would look at from what's being, the TNC's got.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me turn it up behind you.
Hi, I'm Martha Witcher, Emily Township Clerk. I wanted to relay some concerns that our township does have. Back in October of '08, there was a proposal brought before the Commission of Land Exchange or Forest Service, Park Service buying of property within our township. Our township was not notified of the tax of that property being taken off of our tax roll, which the Commission would have to agree to. We had a meeting with the Kevin Achler, Achley, who was the person at Wall at the time our township did. We have a documentation of our meeting that stated if anything came before, again, of exchange purchasing anything, our township was to be notified in accordance to state and federal law. I have signed documents saying yes. I understand rangers change, but I wanted the Commission to be aware that Emily Township has not been made aware of anything in our township being done. I called over to Wall, I had documentation sent on October 28th. They may be sending a mailing list, but I think in accordance with state and federal law, the township is the first local government. It is their responsibility to notify a township of any acquisition or exchange within that township if it reflects or the tax base. We have enough federal ground that is in our township. We do not want any more acres lost. On, so I have that documentation here. I wanted the Commission to be aware that once again, is in '08, we were not, our township was not notified. Once again, we're before the Commission, letting the, the Commission know our township was again, not notified. We also border that property that is being talked about. We are one of those permities, those grazed permities in the Kanata Basin. The Nature Conservancy, my husband is here and he'll discuss it with you farther, but the Nature Conservancy has never contacted any Witchers that have, we have property going up to the fence line. No one has contacted us. No one has said to us, the, the Forest Service has conditions upon your permities numbers due to a lot of conditions, water, range, everything that go year to year, and rightly so. Just wanted you to know that our township was not being made aware, no one has contacted us about anything as ranchers, neighbors, or permities. My husband was going to come up and speak if that would be okay? He's also on our township. Or did you have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
The three thousand one hundred twenty-nine point six-two acres that is listed, that is going to be converted to the U.S. Forest Service, is that all in your township?
It's not in all of our township, no. But we have the, the T three.
The first three parcels that would be traded would be all in four south, fourteen east.
And that's one thousand six fifty-eight?
And it's one thou, one thousand six hundred fifty-eight, two hundred and forty, and eighty, and a hundred and sixty.
So these little parcels, they're talking forty here and there is more than that.
Those are all in your township?
Borders, and borders are private property.
So it's over two thousand acres in our township that'd be taken off of our tax roll and, and off of your tax roll.
Thank you.
And, and being the supervisor for the Emily Township, I'm totally against any property being taken off of our tax roll or yours.
And if you'd like, I can have a copy made of this '08 agreement and give it to Holly if she'd like, if you'd like that for your informational purposes.
If you would, please.
Absolutely. Did you have any other questions for me as clerk or person? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments? At this point, this issue does not require any action, does it, Holly? Okay, informational? And so welcome to your new job and.
He knew what he was getting into, I think.
Mr. Chair.
But again, I'm, I'm sorry.
If, if we are going to, as a board, take a stand on this, then we need to put it on the agenda for next, next meetings.
We can do that, yes.
That was a point I was going to make, because we really do, we really do want your input, so.
If you'd like any more information. I think we really want to give you some input, too.
I distinctly remember being in the Kanata Basin numerous times a few years ago with the prairie dog and the black-footed ferret issue. And I can remember United States Senators being out there, and I can distinctly remember one of your employees telling ranchers out there that if you guys don't quit protesting this, I'll see to it that your grazing goes away. And I heard him with my own ears. And I don't want to hear that again.
You wouldn't have heard that from me, Ken.
No, you, I didn't, it wasn't you. But that guy's long gone. But I would not like to see that again.
I'm not going to, we won't do that, so. I'll, I will primacy that, at least for me. Okay, all right.
Thank you. I would just comment that these gentlemen are following orders from above, and some of the common sense that exists above is questionable. Items from the auditor. Scenic Kanata Basin again. That's the hot spot of the world.
It is. As presented to the Board in your packet, the election for the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District formation was held on June 12th. The votes yes were twenty, the no votes were twenty. We weren't expecting quite that many no votes. And as per statute, then they determined the draw, they determined the winner by draw, and they drew out a yes vote. So we are proceeding with the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District Organization and Incorporation Resolution. And just as a side note, a fire broke out at the polling place at the end of the election. But with the good wits and dedication of the election board, all election materials and ballots were personally protected by Martha. There was no delay in the election. They again proved that they'll take care of their own, just like they told you they would.
Was this really, really serious? Were they trying to stop the election?
I don't, I don't know what caused it.
We don't know, it was lightning, there was a big, but we saved some ice tea in case any.
Lightning what?
Lightning.
Oh, lightning.
Yeah, we had a bad lightning storm.
Bad lightning storm. But they protected the ballots, and Martha was right on top of it. And we appreciate that election board that held on to the freedom of America voters and let them proceed without any delay.
There has to be some deep meaning to that.
There does. There needs to accept the official returns of the organizational election of the Scenic Kanata Basin Ambulance District and issue the order for organization and incorporation effective with taxing authority for the 2012 tax year and after.
And affix the chair's signature.
That's automatic in your motions, yeah.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to what? Authorize the, recognize it? What's your wording?
To accept the official returns of the organizational and issue the order. You accept and issue.
That's, that's the motion, I think. Is it not?
That's exactly what I said.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
The retail malt beverage license renewal for Lieben Promotion has been requested to be withdrawn.
That's my motion, to acknowledge the withdrawal.
Second. Moved and seconded to acknowledge the withdrawal of Lieben Promotion liquor application. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next is the retail malt beverage on-off sale license for Black Hill Speedway for Cross Country Real Estate, who is the titled owner as per the determination in court yesterday. And I believe Jay is here and the owner.
Could you explain why there's a new one and a renewal? What are we doing?
It should just be a new because it's after July 1st. It started before July 1st, and we didn't know which it was going to be.
Thank you.
Just to report on yesterday's court hearing, in a nutshell, Judge Manuel ruled that Mr. Liebig is not the owner or last C of the premises. There are some other parts to the ruling that really aren't germane to the item before you today. It's my understanding that based on that, Mr. Liebig has withdrawn his application for renewal. There's logic in that because he doesn't have the property interest to even apply for renewal. So that leaves you then to consider the application of, I believe, Mr. Keister, or, I don't know if it's.
Cross Country Real Estate.
Cross Country Real Estate with regard to the malt beverage license.
Business name, Half Mile Inc.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Julie or Jay, there has been no immediate appeal, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, but of course, they have, I believe, at least thirty days to make that decision. And if they appealed, yes, the Supreme Court could overturn everything. That could be a year from now. It's my opinion, you don't wait. You go ahead and make a decision today.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the malt beverage license.
I'll second it.
Black Hill Speedway.
Do we have a second?
I do.
Oh, second by Commissioner Basquid. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is the provisional budget.
As the Board met on their July 3rd meeting, I made a few minor changes, corrections to the provisional budget as had been prevented, presented at that time. The budget as it sits now is eighty-one million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It is supported by thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars in miscellaneous revenues, nine million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight in cash reserves, and thirty-six million, zero ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight in property taxes. Property taxes were increased by this year's growth and last year's CPI, reserving three percent CPI for future needs. I put there the, the motion to approve if that is the Board's desire today. However, there are some clarifications that I need. There are some questions answered that Holly has presented, and I can go through those, each one.
If you would.
Okay. The first question, and I think the easiest, is I just want to verify that search and rescue is supposed to be requesting twenty thousand dollars from Title III. They have forty-one thousand in their general fund budget and twenty thousand in a Title III. And I, I. Sixty-one total, if they have uses under the, the Title III, which is fighting on wildfire. I wasn't at either one of those hearings nor, so I just want to verify that before I place that in the, in the provisional budget, which it sits now. Which, if you make changes today, I would request that you let me reevaluate the, the information and bring it back on the 19th.
Do you, do you want motions to verify that for you? Or how do you want to handle it?
Yes, I'd like motions today since these are kind of touchy issues, and it makes no difference to me. It is in there now in the provisional budget. If you want to leave it, I, I just need a motion to that effect. Since we're dealing with Title III and we have to have special hearings later on, I just want to make sure that I have it budgeted as per the Board's desire. just wanna make sure that I have it budgeted per the Board's desire.
What's the wish of the Board?
I think that's the way it was presented to us, and I just, the Chief Deputy Mueller indicated that's the way they presented it, so.
Okay.
I would, I would, if you need the motion, I'd make the motion to...
Yes, please.
Have it set that way.
I'll second.
Motion is second to verify that the budget for search and rescue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Okay. The, let's see. The next decision is on the funding of the Mountain Pine Beetle budget, which, without specific direction from the Board, Scott or I felt uncomfortable assuming it was coming from Title Nine, Title III, Title 19, Title III, and we have put it all under County General. However, with the email that I sent out yesterday with the review of the estimated balance for the new money that will be left, there is $169,023.48 that the Mountain Pine Beetle is a accepted expenditure of that money. Also, Scott brought up to me that if the Board views the Mountain Pine Beetle as an emergency disaster, we have an emergency disaster fund that we have set aside for future disasters, that has a balance of $329,429.21 that would be available to the Board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We just need, I want it verified where, where we're supposed to take it from.
But this brings a question up for me. We did receive notice, at least Commissioners did appear this, like, day or so, that, that the Secure Rural Schools had been funded at a little bit less than what it was last year. So we will be getting some of that, and I, when I was looking through the budget, I couldn't see where we had really said we were going to receive any of that funding, and I was just curious if that would make a difference as far as where the funding for the Mountain Pine Beetle would come from. Cause it, you know, every year, we, we battled whether or not to say we're gonna get some money from that.
We have shown no new receipts in Title III.
Okay. That's what I'm curious about, is if the Secure Rural Schools, I'm wondering...
This is a recipient of the Secure Rural Funds.
The information I received, we will not receive a check for that until after January 1st of 2013.
Right.
So I plan on putting it in my 2013 budget, but for this year, there's no funding.
Aren't we talking about the 2013 budget now?
Yeah.
I mean, 2014. We're not gonna get the check until January 1st, 2013. So you could supplement it, I suppose.
Or, or we can recognize it right now and put it in the budget and not have to supplement. Can we, Julie?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I think we should do.
But I don't have the total number for you. You take 15% off the top, that goes to Title I, Title III, and then the remaining balance is split 50/50 between the schools and the, and the Highway Department, so I guess...
I'm just curious if we...
We could show that as a revenue. I believe that email said 95%. And I think in 11, it was 360-some thousand. I could get that number for you and take 95% of it.
I just think it's a large enough amount that we should be dealing with that, rather than trying to change something else.
I, I would agree. If we know we're getting it, and we know we're gonna spend it, I mean, that's what these estimates are all about, so give it your best guess, and if you don't get that amount, you can't spend it, and if you do get it, then we've got it covered, we don't have to come back for supplements.
Yeah, we got 274,351 in 2011, so 95% of that could be placed in, in the Highway Well, no, because you gotta take 15% off the top.
This is your share.
That was my share.
That was your share.
I could put that amount back in my revenue side.
I, I think if we have it authorized, it's been passed, we know it's coming.
Right.
And, and that's where I, I wasn't necessarily starting through the Highway part, but we got there, but I, there will be some funding coming that we would use for Mountain Pine Beetle through that, then, too, and I just think we should use that information.
So if you put, if you show that as a revenue, do you, do you then need to adjust your expenditure side, so you can have spending authority for it?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe you can put that stoplight in, out on...
Sharon Lake Road.
Sharon Lake Road. Just about cover it.
Well, it, it currently does not meet warrants. It meets a peak hour warrant, but it does not meet the eight-hour warrant, so in our long-range transportation plan, it's put in as midterm, we need a, a few more years of, of traffic volume increases before to meet the warrants.
I hope, I hope we're not just waiting for more accidents to happen.
No, we're not, it's...
That's what's gonna happen.
I think we're wandering a little bit here from the budget, and...
Losing control.
In, in terms of this last discussion, and I see Scott's gonna get in on it, I'm, I'm wondering if we're even ready to move on this whole thing, if we...
You know, unfortunately, it was just like Friday, we got that information, that it, I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, that's news to me, but that's great, and then with that, there'll be Title II monies coming down, too, that we tapped into this past year, so there's funding there, and then Forest Service also indicated they might be able to get us some funding, too, so I don't know what you wanna do with this pine beetle, where you wanna set it for now, but I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna get some outside funding to help it, I mean, on top of the existing Title III, and there, there'll be some leftover from this year that we can hopefully carry over as well, it's looking like.
I guess, Mr. Chair, for me, my concern with, with the way we got the information from Julie, that means we raised taxes, and I...
No, it's, it's already included in the general fund, so we're at the worst tax situation, if you will. It is all being taxed right now for Mountain Pine Beetle. So if you move it to Title III, even the portion that we're certified as of now, it will reduce the amount that we need for taxes or take from reserves, whichever the Board directs, and then we can make a change more toward the fall if we have more secure information.
But, but if we, if, if we put in our best estimate, and that's all these revenues are 90% of the time, if we put in our best estimate of what those revenues are gonna be, and, and if they don't come, then we can make a decision either to allow that department to go ahead and spend that amount of money and take it out of reserves, or they can just not spend it.
Yes.
And, and if we do that, then we don't have to tax the people for the dollars that, that we're getting from somewhere else. So I, I, I would just encourage everybody to give your best guess, your best estimate as to what these revenues are gonna be, and let's include them in there so that we don't have to overtax.
But at this point, we need to reach some conclusion as to what our provisional budget will be.
Yes.
And, yes, we have until September to finalize it.
Mm-hmm.
And in between now and then, how do we get to where you need to be in order to do the calculations?
Yep.
So what, what else do you need to know from us?
Well, I need, I need the direction securely from the Board, which way you want me to move on Mountain Pine. If you want me to remove it from General and place it under other revenues, either through Title III or through, where'd you go? Emergency Disaster or these other federal funds, it would take me a while to get that information from Scott.
So do you...
I would need it by next Wednesday.
That's my motion, is to take it out of General Fund and put it to other revenue, and if worse comes to worse, I mean, we obviously, I thought we were gonna use Title III funds, but we can do that, and the rest of it, I think, if, if this isn't an emergency, I don't know what is, and we can take it out of that fund.
You're saying remove it from General Fund?
Remove it from General Fund.
Is that all part of your motion? Or did you?
So the way I...
It was partly why you should vote for it, too.
So the way I understand the motion is to re...
We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Is to remove it from the General Fund for funding, and into Title III with an estimate of current balance plus receipts in 2013, and the remainder to come from Emergency Disaster.
If, if needed.
That would be just right.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Are you comfortable with what you have?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Next.
The next question I have is on the Library Fund.
Before we get off that Title III, though, are we gonna do something with County Highway?
Yes, I have, I have an increased revenue and increased road and bridge.
Okay, all right.
By an estimate that he has yet to give me.
All right.
Would you like to make that in a motion, or do you care?
Well, do we need it in a motion? I mean, that's what you're gonna do.
I'm just was really concerned with the Title III money. I, I can just do this one.
If, if you, make yourself comfortable, if, if you want it in the motion...
No, I don't need one on Heine. I was just really concerned with the Title III money that I got, what the Board was intending.
Okay. Library.
Library. I sent to you a memo delineating what would happen if you took at your request the additional 3% in tax revenue this year, instead of just the 2.1, because we are running out of money in that fund, and it just prolonged it one year from decision in, in ending in a positive balance in 2015 to having to consider something for the 2016, versus if we take the 3% from this year's CPI, it will change it from a positive balance in 2016 to a negative balance in 2017. So discuss, it would delay that possible opt-out or budget cutting or discussion by one year.
What you wish.
The Board's motion as it sits is just to use the 2.1 from last year.
I think we need to keep it that way.
Is that a motion?
Do I move?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would still move to, to keep the original 2.1.
Motion for 2.1, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, didn't, didn't we just use 2% plus the merit, rather than 2.1?
No, the motion, the CPI that we were holding over from last year was 2.1, that was the motion.
Yeah, but I thought we, I thought the motion was just to use 2% of it.
It's 2.1.
2.1.
It was last year's CPI, which was 2.1.
Yeah, but I don't...
We only gave 2%, we only gave a 2% merit, a COLA, and a 1 in 25% merit.
That's where the 2% came in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is. It may not be exactly to this motion, but I think we need to determine why we put a million dollars into Western Dakota Tech for library services, and I thought back when I was on the County Commission before, that that's where we were headed with this, that we were going to make Western Dakota Tech our library for county library services. And I don't know how the taxpayers can continue to pay the amount of money that we're putting into the Rapid City Library and put a million dollars into the library fund at West Dakota Tech, and what did we put that in there for, if that's not what we were gonna use as our
Any further discussion? It sounds to me like more thoughtful need to go into this as we move along. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
One, one no vote. Anymore?
Holly has a few, do you wanna handle these, Holly? On your outer fund under...
This sheet, right here.
Okay.
I just need yours.
We need to make some additional decisions on the funding for the outside organizations that requested funding. Currently, Black Hills Workshop is not in our budget, but they have requested $10,000. So I would like a motion on whether we are going to fund them in 2013.
And we did not fund them in 2012.
Correct, sir.
I'd make a motion to not fund them.
Second.
For 2013.
Moved and seconded to not allocate funds to the Black Hills Workshop. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Item B.
Rapid City Economic Development. Currently, they are in the budget at $25,000. I know there is some discussion on changing that amount, and would like direction from the Board.
What's the wish of the Board?
Mr. Chair, we, we funded them this year at $10,000.
Correct, 2012 is at $10,000.
Prior to that, we had not been funding them.
I don't believe so. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I make a motion to fund them at $10,000, matching the 2012 current amount.
Second.
Moved and seconded to fund economic development at $10,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
And we have two requests that are not included in the current version of the budget. The first is we have a new request from the Black Hills Council of Local Governments. I guess we have funded them previously in years past, they've requested funding again in the amount of $14,505.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to deny the $14,505 of Black Hills Council Local Governments.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to deny funding for Black Hills Council Local Governments. Any discussion?
I just have one thing, and, and it has to do with an article I read in the paper this weekend, and I don't wanna appear to be anti soccer fields, but they wanna use it, and Blaze is, is one of the people leading the charge to use TIF out to build the soccer fields. And I guess, you know, that costs the county, it said, oh, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers any money. Well, we all know better than that, it costs us money, especially the county, it costs the county a lot of money, more than the city. And I just, the problem with it, that this one is, they have to hurry up, according to Blaze, and get it done, because there's, they're already building out there, and they gotta capture those buildings. Well, that was never the intent of a, of a TIF. The idea is to get business and, and buildings in, not to capture the ones that are already got a building permit and are being built. So I, I'm not sure that Blaze is acting in Pennyton County's best interest, and I guess I can't see giving them another $14,000 to do it.
Any other discussion? Now, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
And the final one is we have a request from the 2-1-1 helpline for $3,000.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to see us do this, and one of the reasons that I do want to add, and I've not necessarily always been a proponent of 211, but one of the things that has become very apparent as we have worked through disaster preparedness, is that this is a resource for us to get information out about many different things that could happen, given a disaster in our, our area. So I, I am going to change my mind about this, and I would like to make a motion to give a $3,000... a motion to give a $3,000 funding to 211 helpline because of the ability of them to help during a, make a motion of disaster.
You're supposed to make your comments after the motion.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was following Ron's example.
No, he, he lobbied for his motion in, in subsequent remarks, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to deny the money for the 211 helpline. We'll see where it goes.
There's a second.
We have two motions on the floor.
I think we jumped ahead of ourselves. You made a motion, Greg. And I-
After she made remarks.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The motion, motion was-
Just counted yours.
Might have been a good motion, but it was out of order. So, the chair does recognize Commissioner Davis's motion and-
And second.
And the second from Commissioner Busker. Now, Nancy, if you want to debate these two.
I have said my piece.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The reason I am totally against this 2-1-1 line is, first of all, they want taxpayers' money from the people in this audience and the citizens of Pennington County and myself and everybody at this board to take that money and advertise in the newspapers and on the radio and other things to people that, tell them how to go get more taxpayers' money. So they're taking our taxpayers' money to advertise to people how to get more taxpayers' money. And I don't think that's the right thing to do. And when they first started this program in Pennington County, they rented the rooms out at the country club out on Sheridan Lake Road and had a big meeting out there. And the first question that was asked to them was by Senator Haverly, who was on the, as you know, on the state legislature. He said, if somebody calls you up when you get this put into place and asks where they can find a childcare facility, are you going to send them to my childcare facility? And they said, no. And he said, how come? And they said, because we are going to send these people to a place that they can get it free. And that just has galled me ever since they made that statement. And it's just wrong to take taxpayers' money and advertise to people on how they can get more taxpayers' money.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holloway.
I'm going to support the motion, but not for the same reasons that Commissioner Davis has expressed. I, I think, and I've, I've seen this board through the years work at trying to get these types of budgets, these, these small budgets for various groups that are doing a good job. And I think 211 does a good job. But so does the Boys Club, the Girls Club, the YMCA, and all of those that used to be on the county's budgets to give them subsidies every year. And they've worked very hard to keep, get those off over the years. I just think that this is opening that door back up again. So I'm going to support the motion for that reason.
Any other discussion?
I will support the motion based on what Commissioner Holloway said also.
Any more discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One no vote. Are we done with your list, Holly?
Yes, sir. I believe we are done with ours. Unless the board has something else, I can take those directions and fine tune it, ready for the next commission meeting.
Any further direction from the commission relative to-
Any other concerns?
Hopefully, this will be the last one.
It's a process.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of things I'd just like to bring up and sit for in the provisional budget and before we pass anything, could carry on because once it's passed, it's going to be difficult to change. First of all, I think the Pennington County taxpayers are paying enough money for enough employees for Pennington County. I don't remember exactly how many we have, but somewhere around 640 employees for Pennington County, maybe even more than that. But I just don't think we need to put any more employees on the tax brackets and to tax the people of Pennington County to pay for those. Again, I think we need to look at the library budget very, very heavy at the library budget and see where we're going with that. I'll let it go at that for time in.
Commissioner Holloway.
Julie, on the library budget, that all comes from that opt-out funds. I mean, they, they're original lockdown?
The opt-out is only for $188,200.
Okay, but, but-
It comes from a specific area.
Okay.
The amount of-
But wasn't that what the, those people in that area voted for?
Yes. And, and I will tell the board, when you do an opt-out resolution, you can automatically, in that resolution, on an opt-out, refer to a vote. You don't have to wait for an opt-out to be referred. If that makes it easier for the board, just, and we would want to time it frankly, so that we could put it on the June ballot because opt-out resolutions have to be, opt-out resolution ballot questions have to be decided before October 1st. So if we don't time it for a June primary in an even year, then it's a countywide election.
And, and if we, if we pass some kind of a motion to have a vote on that, would it be for the current opt-out that's in place?
No, that current opt-out stays as it is forever. Under the new opt-out laws, you have to set a specific dollar amount, just like you did then, but you have to label it for a certain number of years. You can layer opt-out upon opt-out. The $188,200 will never go away. But then they changed the rules and now you have to list a certain number of years. But a future board can add another one on at the point that that ran out.
We really don't need to consider this now until 2014, maybe?
Early, early 2014, so we can get that resolution passed so we can vote on it in June.
You're, you're putting that on our reminder thing for 2014?
We certainly can. It just saves us the cost of a special election.
We, we wouldn't need to, though, if, if the, the library organizations come in with a reduced budget that will match what the-
That's correct.
With their revenues.
You can do it by, by budget reduction also.
By budget reduction.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess that's, that's what I hope they do because I'm not going to support any kind of, of an opt-out. And, and I hope that, I hope they'll come back to us. They, they know what these revenue sheet, or information is that, that we're getting from you. I mean, you're providing it to these libraries as well.
I only sent it to Rapid City.
And-
Send it to the other ones.
They were at the meeting. They were all here that day. I hope they take heed to what was said at the budget hearings.
Mr. Chair.
Any, any other comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, we did have a vote of the people that was generated by some friends of the library and, that's neither here nor there, the people did vote. And they voted to have library services, but they didn't say where the library services should be. And I think that's why six, seven, eight years ago, when we started looking at, going to Western Dakota Tech, we were looking at that to provide the county's responsibility for library services. And that would take the people out of the downtown area where no place to park and other things that goes on at the local library, and put them out at Western Dakota Tech. And that's where we put that million dollars in, I believe, for that reason. So, into my soapbox.
Okay, thank you. Do we need any kind of a motion today?
Nope, I'll bring it back for next meeting.
You comfortable, Holly? Thank you. Next item is the Pennington County expansion, campus expansion. Mike and Mike.
Good morning. Mike Cool with Buildings and Grounds. I have some supplemental information I want to give the board members.
Thank you.
You're cutting down more trees.
All right, good man.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, excuse me, last Wednesday, Buildings and Grounds held, held a bid opening for the evidence building equipment package. The equipment in this can be generally described as evidence lockers, storage systems, lab casework and lab equipment. We had four bidders on the project. The project was divided, divided into four bid items. The reason for that was to allow more bidders on, in particular, to provide the equipment. Some equipment providers can provide more of the equipment than others can. So we did it with four bid items. We did not receive a, a bid for bid item C, which was a vehicle lift. That item will have to be procured in some other manner, though. Since some of this equipment will be physically incorporated into this new evidence building, we've als, we need to get it ordered or under contract fairly soon so that we can do some coordination work with a contractor. But to minimize the cost for the county, we, there are some items that use and excise tax apply. When, when, when it's a construction item, use and excise tax applies to any particular items that are being incorporated into the building, basically attached to the building, or items that need a plumber or electrician to make a connection. So we have separated those items out and are looking to award contracts that will differentiate between items that are construction-related and non-construction-related. The information that I just gave you. I, I should back up a little bit. In my memo to you last week, I indicated that there had been a decision made by, made by the A&E to not include these taxes at bidding time because of the potential confusion that would be involved in trying to determine which items would have taxes applied to them and which weren't. So it was decided to, to ask the, the bidders to not bid the taxes and then we would look at that and apply it after, after the fact, so that we didn't have any confusion over what taxes would be applied. The, as I started out to say, the information that I just provided you is how the contracts line out for the bids that we received. For bid item A, a contract with Space Saver Corporation to provide the evidence processing equipment for $79,871.44. And this is one of the items that includes use and excise tax. For the equipment under bid item B, a contract with Space Saver Corporation to provide and install storage systems for $200,371. And taxes do not apply to this contract. And then for, as I said before, item C, we did not receive a bid on that one. So bid item D, we have separated into two contracts. For the equipment that is part of construction or is fixed as part of the construction, a contract with Innovative Laboratory Systems Incorporated to provide and install fixed lab equipment for $60,881.37. And this, this amount has use and excise tax. And the other part of bid item D would be for a equipment contract not, is, is not part of construction. The contract with Innovative Laboratory Systems Incorporated to provide and install mobile lab equipment for $127,788. Taxes would not apply to this, this item.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mike, this is within the budget for that evidence building. This is, was per-
This, the, the numbers that I presented to the committee before in terms of budgets did not include FFNE items, which is considered to be an FFNE item. But it was an, this is an item that we did have estimates for before, that we're, we told about $630,000. And this tolls out to be $468,901.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the contracts as outlined by Mr. Cool.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And just to clarify, is your motion all for-
Yes.
-bid items?
Right. In, in the dollar amounts that has been stated.
And the secretary has that in hand? So the motion would cover Space Saver Corporation for items A and B and Innovative Laboratories for items D.
Item D, item D.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Eric, I'd make a motion to take a recess.
If you-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How long?
Ten minutes.
Whenever you grab me and bring me back in.
Ten minutes.
All right, ten minutes.
Next item on the agenda is 17A, which is a distracted driving simulator informational item. Dustin.
Thank you, Chairman Peterson. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Again, informational item and be happy to stand for any questions afterwards. This is a, a part of our Public Safety Education Consortium. It's a group of about 12 to 14 agencies in the area that all have some buy-in to public safety messages. The Sheriff's Office is part of that, Rapid City Fire Department, Pennington County Fire, Regional Health, Red Cross, those types of organizations. Our goal this year, our focus this year, was on distracted driving, whether it be texting and driving, impaired driving, anything that, that, that alters your ability to operate a motor vehicle was going to be our safety message for this year. As part of that, Regional Hospital is, is sponsoring one of the summer nights on Seventh, the evenings. And we have some booth space. We wanted to put some type of, of interactive exhibit for, for people to, to use in regards to distracted driving, texting and driving, impaired driving. This simulator travels around the state. It's currently in Sturgis. So popular that they're looking at buying another one. It's free of charge, but rather than bring it down and use it for just one night during, during a downtown Rapid City event, the group that runs that would like it in the area for a longer period of time. So what we have lined out here is we'll have it for about 17 days. And the location for it, you can think of it, if anybody remembers the old Pole Position arcade video games, kind of a sit-down driving game with some screens and, and the controls of a vehicle. So it's a fairly self-contained unit. We're looking at setting that up hopefully in the same area that we did the blood drive recently in the courthouse, basically over there by the public defender's door in that rotunda area. And the folks that will be operating that will be members from that Public Safety Education Consortium. So the strongest partner we have in this particular simulator is Regional Hospital. So Regional Hospital will be helping us out quite a bit with that, as well as Emergency Management, Fire Department, some of the- Management, Fire Department, some of those folks. So that's, that's basically that in a nutshell. Be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Does the commissioners have to do it?
I don't think there's any. I asked, oh, if you do the simulator, I would, I would absolutely encourage and invite you to do that, absolutely.
How old are you?
Well, the thing is, I don't, I don't know how to text or Twitter or any of that stuff.
Then my guess is you'll ace it.
Maybe I can get out of it.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dustin. Items from the Highway Department, Heidi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You'd received an email request to consider adding some roads to the highway system out by Sunset Ranch Road District. The gentleman sent Holly an email, and I got a copy of it yesterday, that he can't be here at the meeting. So I would not be opposed to having you continue this to the next meeting so that representative from that road district could be here to address his concerns if he so desire.
My motion.
Second. Moved and seconded to Grant Heinie's recommendation, deferring this item. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Heidi.
And if I have liberty to give you two updates quick?
Yes.
Deerfield Road had its bottom lift asphalt put on it. I got a call last night about 5:00. So the first lift is on the Deerfield Road.
Excuse me, Heidi, what did they call you?
Federal Highway called me, and they're going to finish the top lift Thursday and Friday. And the Jensen fence has been removed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I T S Department update.
Good morning, Russ Tinsfold, I T S Director. I just wanted to give you an update on where all this hard work you've been putting into our department over the last year has gotten you to this point. And towards the end of this update, we also need to talk a little bit about what kind of a shortage we're going to have at the end of this year. And I, I understand that that's really not a surprise, but I don't know that anybody's really put a dollar amount on that up until this point. So I've done my best to try to estimate where we're going to be at the end of this year. And at that point, we can talk a little bit about some of the options. So I guess the first thing I'd like to say is, over the last month, everybody here at the county has been, seemed very encouraged, very excited about the direction that the I T S Department's been going. And in fact, they're starting to stack up requests. Once we get off this H P mainframe, they, they've got a lot of good ideas out there of ways that they can use our department to increase efficiencies. So we've still got a lot of work ahead of us, but it's really going to be good in the end. So I appreciate your patience. In your packet, I think you've got a copy of my update here. I'm not going to read it word for word. I'm just going to hit the highlights here. One of the recent things that we've done is we've been able to fill one of our higher level programming positions that has, that you authorized for us recently, but it took a while to get it filled. Our new systems analyst, Steve Charnes, is here. And he's just been here a week or so, but I think he's got a lot of potential. He's been working in Rapid City for 10 years as a software developer, so he brings a lot of the exact skills that we've been needing here. Next thing is tomorrow, day after tomorrow, we're going to pull the Sheriff's Office I T folks into the county I T department officially on the 5th of July. And that's going to significantly grow our department, as you'll see in your organizational chart. We also have the requests that we've made to you recently, well, to pull those guys over, but also to potentially change our half F T E to a full-time F T E, starting with the 2013 budget. So I hope that you'll continue to keep that in mind. And as far as the, where we're at right now, I've included a copy of the organizational chart, just so you can kind of see how it works. Not, not that you may care too much about this, but the important thing to note is we're building in some structure as this department is, has grown over the last 10 years and is growing significantly right now. It's important that we really put in some good reporting structure so that it can function as efficiently as possible. Regarding the consultants, we've got two main consultants that you've been working with over the better part of the last year. One is Diana Nelson, the former I T S Director, has graciously agreed to continue helping us through this process. We're not quite through with her assistance at this point, with the election coming up this fall, especially she has some specific knowledge that she's going to share with us to make sure that we get through the election process without any problems. After we get through this last election, my understanding is a lot of the voter software things move over to the state. So those kind of go away for us as a, as a local agency. But because the election, of course, is this fall, we've extended Diana's contract. So she is under contract to help us through the end of this year, but honestly, we don't expect to need her assistance very much. For example, in the month of June, I think we had less than two hours of time that we actually needed from her. So we're not very reliant on, on anything that she helps us with right now, but we do need to keep that contract in place. The other consultant, Fire Steel Technologies, that's Linda Anderson. Linda is beginning now with the month of July, is going to cut back her hours. We still need her involved in this process to get us off that old H P mainframe system. We expect that once we're off that system and the bugs are kind of worked out, which, which will be by the end of this year, we won't have a need for her. Now, we have written in a little bit of money in next year's budget to have her come back and potentially do some training for us, so that we can really take advantage of the relationship she's built with our staff here. The H P conversion project, that's the big thing you've been working on here for the last, literally for the last three or four years. We anticipate right now being off that system about the middle of September, if nothing else comes up that we're not, not expecting. Got a lot of other projects I won't run through here, but my point is, we've got a lot of other things besides the H P project that are in the works. Now, it takes me to the hard part, which is the budget and where we're sitting at right now. And you'll see here that, that there are two specific items that account for our budget shortage. The biggest one is the fact that we had to hire really some expensive consulting to come in and, and get us to this point. And also the F T E, which is Steve that I introduced you to, that F T E was not budgeted for, for this year. And we're going to need those funds for the last half of 2012. So those two items together, the consulting, the new F T E exceeds what we're going to be short, which means if it weren't for those two things, we actually would have done okay. So my, my estimate, estimation is that at the end of this year, we're probably going to be short between $160,000 and $170,000. Really not much else I can add to that, other than we, we all knew it was coming, and I can tell you it went to consulting and to the new F T E. My understanding is, if you choose to, you can do something with some of the options for how to fund that, part of it even today, if you choose to, but I'll leave that up to you. The only other thing I'll add here is, I'm really optimistic that once we get past this H P conversion project in this fall, at sometime this fall, that we really can start to focus on how do you use technology to get more bang for your buck? How can individual departments do their jobs either a little better, a little more efficient, maybe a little cheaper, using technology? And that really should be the role of the I T department here. We should be helping every department to use that, that technology, which often is, is expensive, to save you money somehow in the end. So with that, if you wanted to discuss the shortage or anything else that I presented to you, I'll, I'll answer questions.
Any comments? Questions from the commission?
Russ, on the people from the Sheriff's Office moving over July 5th, are, is the sheriff going to continue to pay their wages through the end of this year?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, so that we won't have to do any budget adjustments from his budget to your budget during 2012?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Russ, frankly, first of all, I want to thank you for, and all of the employees in the I T for what you've done there in the last few months. It's been a fantastic situation, and I hope it continues that, and I believe we're getting ourselves where we need to be. Second of all, I would, I would make a request that you put out a little program, Computer 101 for the county commissioners, and make it mandatory that we all show up.
I'll work on that. I'll be a dropout.
And, and we're going to do that.
And, and no, no pink and giraffe, I mean zebra.
Anything else? If not, thank you, Russ. Julie?
I would request that the board give us some direction on where we're going to come up with the money. You have $100,000 left in your contingency fund, which you could make a motion today to transfer that to his professional services and fees line for the contract expenses, leaving 70, 60 to 70,000. And you know we have to have a specified amount, so I, I went with the higher amount of the 70,000. If we used it as a general fund reserve from unreserved, from unassigned reserves, it would reduce your 2012 reserve to, from 2301 to 2287. And it would mean your end goal of 2013 would go from 1993 to 1979. Of course, pulling out the 256,000 for the mountain pine beetle this morning, your reserves will be estimated, I believe, at over 20% by the end of the year, by the end of 2013. So I, we're going, as, as policy, we're going to start including every time we do a supplement what the reduction will be in reserves for, for the board. It, it just keeps you a little bit better on track of what those are. So we need some direction that you're going to fund these, number one, and number two, how you want to fund it.
Mr. Chair.
And I appreciate that, as, you as an auditor need to know that stuff. I guess, you know, what we've done in the past seems to me, and we, I know it won't work with this much money, but it's, why don't you come back in November and see how much you really need, because up till then, maybe you can save some more.
Yes, this, that, that can be done. He'll be running in the hole partly in, in September.
And obviously, if we use all 100,000 out of our contingency, then.
You have nothing for emergencies.
That's gone.
No, as long as, as we have a direction that that's the way you want us to go, it allows us to overspend his budget until closer to the end of the year.
I don't think anybody up here is not going to fund this, so I mean.
So you're all right with overspending the budget until?
Yes, as long as the board is at their direction to see how, it's, it's wise to see how much they can absorb, especially as a, as a new department head coming in. We'll have the budget finalized by then.
I mean, obviously, he's not going to save 170,000.
You just never know.
But he could.
If you tie it to his performance review.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, maybe you can end, and maybe you can too, Russ. How much does the Highway Department use our I T department?
You know, I can make just a, not even a very educated guess, but we do have a lot of software out there that was created in-house that, that they are using. And we do, for example, have one programmer who, in the past, has spent significant amounts of time on that software.
I guess where I was going with that is that we have the money coming from new license plate fees going into Highway, and we were told specifically by the legislature not to touch that general fund money going to Highway. But really, if he is getting that much services out of our I T department, could we not use some of that money that's being generated in Highway to help pay for this I T stuff?
If I may address that?
Yes.
In, several years back, we made that decision that all non-general fund funds would pay for a portion of their I T expenses. Somewhere along the line, it was dropped from those that were funded other than a mixture of funds from the city. So we still get paid for those dispatch, maybe it's just dispatch, that use I T departments, that the majority of the funding comes from the city, so they are paying part of that. But we were doing it, and the board took it out.
So do you need any action from us today?
No, we, we have an understanding. Yep. Thank you.
Anything else, Russ?
No, sir.
Anything from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 20, Black Hills National Forest Pine Beetle.
Good morning, Scott Guthie, Pennington County Wheaton Pass Director. I prepared some comments for the board's approval and the chairman's signature on the Mountain Pine Beetle Response Project Draft Environmental Impact Statement. This has been an ongoing process. I think the original scoping process started back in August of 2010, and at the time, only alternative A and B, and, or alternative B was a preferred action. Then through the scoping process and comments, the Forest Service decided to create alternative C, which basically doubled the, the amount of commercial harvest, non-commercial treatments, and total mechanical treatments on, being done on the Forest Service to try to help get ahead of this pine beetle epidemic. So I prepared comments from the board that supports alternative C as the preferred alternative in this response, Mountain Pine Beetle Response Project.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Appreciate your work. We've looked over the comments, and do you need a motion from the board?
I do for your signature on the comments, unless you want to just sign it without. But I think you need a motion.
What's the issue to the commission?
I'd make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature on the Mountain Pine Beetle Response Project Environmental Impact Statement, supporting alternative C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 21, have a lien request, release. Who handles that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I may hurry that up, item up just a little bit. I'd make a motion to deny the request for lien release from J P as initials, and that's not J P Dunneffin, by the way. It's a different J P. So that's my motion.
Still appreciate that. Thank you again.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
No second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is obviously one we're not going to get paid on, but you know, just for principle only, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion.
And the other thing, I think, for the public's information, this is an inmate at the state penitentiary requesting to have his, his court-appointed attorney and court costs fees waived, so.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is items from the chair, and I'm not going to take up much time. I would comment that there appears to be a number of things that we encounter from time to time, including some of the ambiguities surrounding fire control, fireworks, that sort of thing, and also comments about the TIF legislation. I would encourage the commission to focus their thoughts on a legislative list of things that we want to convey to our legislators to be worked on in the next legislative session. We run into a lot of dark corners from time to time. Next item.
Mr.? Yes. Mr. Chair, before you get off of that, I think the, the association wants a resolution sent to them by the end of July. Isn't it, Ron? I think it's by the end of July. And so if we're going to have some legislation that we want, it would appear to me that at our next committee. at our next commission meeting, we'd have to pass those resolutions. And so I guess I'm wondering, do we need to, you know, as individual board members, if we have some specifics that we want to discuss at the next meeting, do we need to give that notice ahead of time to get it posted, or do we just put on the agenda resolutions concerning potential legislation? Would that cover it and be able to talk about multiple items?
I think that would cover it, Commissioner Holloway, and I guess for, for me personally, Commissioner, or Chairman Peterson, you brought up a, an issue that drove me nuts, quite frankly, in the last several months, and it's the fireworks issue. Those statutes, and I've been on the phone, I can't tell you, with countless number of people, from people who drafted the laws to law enforcement, to fire suppression folks, to committee members in PIR, the Attorney General's Office, different states attorneys from counties. Clearly, there is some confusion. Clearly, the statutes, two or three of them at a minimum in that chapter of the code, need to be addressed. In PIR this year, I've kind of stuck my neck out there, so now I'm kind of in the position, I guess, where I'm going to have to draft some, but I'm glad to do it because I, I want clarity. And so at least with regard to the fireworks statutes or legislation, I'm, I'm going to do that and plan to do that. I don't know what other legislation, of course, you're considering or talking about, but with regard to that, I intend to do that. Denny Gordon, I think, will assist me locally as well, and, but you'll be seeing that come from me. Now, I don't know if you want something from me for your resolution in, in two weeks or something, or, or not. I don't know if you intend to include that in there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jay, and my answer to that, I can speak for everybody, but my suggestion is that you have something for the county commission that we can take to our next South Dakota Association meeting, and also then take that to the state's attorney's organization, and, and maybe possibly even the sheriff's organization, so we can get them all working together on this item.
And I know with the State's Attorney Association, typically, the legislation, I think, they want it, oh, it's usually about October, somewhere in there is where they want you to have that into them. I don't know about the other associations, but...
Well, I do. Thanks to Commissioner Holloway, I'm now the chairman of the Black Hills Association. And, and being absent from the meeting doesn't help it either. But anyway, that meeting is July the 20th, and that will be the meeting where we need resolutions that we will pass at that time, or, or at least vote on, and, and to go to the state convention in September. So by the 20th, we, the next meeting, we really need to have at least something started that we can take to that meeting in, Sturgis.
Holly, do you have any guidance for us logistically, as far as working with Jay and, and getting things positioned for our next meeting?
Well, I'd say since the notice has been given today, we can certainly address the fireworks one. If there's anything to be told now in the next meeting from the commissioners that you want to work with, let me know so we can get it posted properly on the next meeting agenda, which will be on the 17th, which, Ron, I think I can turn around and send that to the association by the 20th.
So if any individual commissioner has a hot button they want to push, let you know, and then...
So I can meet with the necessary individuals, whether it be Jay or department heads, to start drafting things.
Another hot button that I've got is the TIFs. I, I want to talk about TIFs next time, and specifically, as it relates to the county having some say if we're going to have our portion of the property tax applied in a TIF. Currently, the cities have all the say in that. We don't have any say, so I, that's one of the things that I want to put on, and actually, if I talk about it right now, maybe those people who want to support that, or I suppose there might even be some that would oppose it, could come to the next meeting.
And just, Mr. Chair, if I might ask something to what Dan said. One of the things that's always concerned me is that while the county doesn't have a say, we have one vote on a seven-member panel, is that correct, for TIFs? And we're, the county is the one who has to cover the loss of that taxation funding, but if at all possible, to me, the fair thing is if, if a city issues a TIF, then it's their taxpaying percentage that pays for that TIF, and it doesn't affect us. I mean, that's the only fair way to do it. If we issue a TIF, which Pennington County has issued a few, then it's our taxation portion that should pay for that TIF, and that's, to me, the fairest way in addition to representation.
Well, just one other comment on this, and then I think we'll move on, but it's been my experience that the legislative process works 12 months of the year, and there's a, you know, couple of months of formal process, and then we're, we're in the informal period, and you've got to get this information to and, and get feedback from the public. Just one group talking to another, like the County Commissioners Association, isn't going to do it. The public's got to support it if it's going to work, so pass the word. Anyway, our next item, we have selection of two planning and zoning commissioners. We have the good fortune of having eight applicants. Raleigh Hill has notified us that he has withdrawn, and thinking through the process, and this is my, my approach to it, the other commissioners can object and overrule me, but I propose that each applicant draw a number. That will be the order in which they will be interviewed, and that during the interviews, the remaining candidates are not in the room. You can go wherever you want to be, but I think in order to, to be objective in terms of the responses to the questions that the commissioners will ask, and you'll all be asked the same questions, that the last person listening to seven others might adjust their comments somewhat, and so that's my proposal. Does anyone on the commission object to us approaching it that way?
Mr. Chair, I think it's a great idea.
If there's no formal objection...
Well, if they go out in the hallway, you know, the meeting is broadcast in the hallway, can, it's not, it's turned off now? Okay, good.
But, you know, when number one's on deck, number two could be peeking in the window at least.
Who's on third?
Right. So if there's no objection from the commission, and no one, none of the applicants rebel and object, we will have the drawing. And is that what the little cup is for?
Who's up?
I might, I might indicate that the length of your answers does not necessarily add to your score.
Is he? Who's number one?
If you'll just hold up a second, we'll see where Commissioner Holloway went. We will, each commissioner will ask you a question. We'll just start with you, Nancy, with number one question, and we'll go down the line, and everyone will be asked the same, so proceed.
Has on agenda William McCollum, I go by Bill. I recently retired from 30 years of federal service, so I've got time to, to spend.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, Bill, thanks for applying for this, first of all, and, and why did you apply for it?
Well, I, I've spent a majority of my federal career overseeing most of the planning function at Ellsworth, so I felt that I could offer, have something to offer to the city or the county as a, in, based on my past experience and my educational background as a civil engineer.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name?
McCollum.
McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. McCollum, what do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Main responsibilities would be, actually, to, I think, to guide, guide the county and, and future development of, of the county, how, how it is best served to the future development of the county, and...
Okay. Thank you. Going down the line? Yes. What qualifications and experience do you have that would make you a good Pennington County Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
I would say my, my past experience is overseeing most of the planning functions at Ellsworth for the past 20-plus years is part of, partly adds the experience, the experience prospect, plus my civil engineering background has given me an educational background as well as a relatively good experience background.
Thank you.
Morning, Jake. Thanks for applying. I appreciate your willingness to offer your time and talents, but my question is, and it's kind of a far-flung question, but it says, please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make decisions?
I, I didn't understand.
Well, please describe your decision, decision-making process. Now, can you come up with an answer with that one?
I'm sorry, I still didn't understand.
When you make a decision, what, how do you do it?
Oh, 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 first, first, I want input from whoever the participants are. I normally like to listen and then, then make a decision, rather than make a decision then listen.
Okay. The last question is, how would you promote Pennington County to the public, in the public?
Promoting Pennington County to the public is, is probably one of the easiest jobs that you could, would have, but I would say just trying to promote the, the opportunities for continued growth and, and a positive life.
Thank you, and thank you for applying. Call for number two. Thank you, Dan.
Number two? Who's number two? Gail?
Morning.
Good morning to the board.
Morning, Gail.
Morning. Each commissioner will ask you one question, Gail. We'll just go down the line where asking everyone the same questions.
So I get to start? Thanks, Gail.
Should we do something with that light?
I know, it's awful.
A little suntan lotion will help?
I, I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of times, anyway, thanks for applying, Gail. We, we really appreciate your interest.
I'm a little bit hard of hearing. Could you please turn the mic over?
Okay. Thank you for applying. Does that help?
Okay.
Okay. And, and also, we'd like to understand why you did apply for the position on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm retired. I have more time to devote to public service. I've been active in several planning and zoning issues in the past. I'm a rural resident, as I believe most planning and zoning commissioners should be. A rural, as a rural resident, I understand the lifestyle of rural, rural living with more individual responsibility and more freedom and doing with less government. I don't want you to take this personally, being, some of you are city residents, but as far as the planning and zoning portion of it, I think the city resident should not be making planning and zoning recommendations that rural residents have to live by. They have the legal right to apply, but I don't feel it's ethical.
What do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, it's to act as an intermediary between the public, the planning directory, and, and the county commissioners, and to give the public one more access and input into the planning and zoning process on issues that affect them. It also, to fairly administer the planning and zoning regulations while allowing the property owner to use his property as he sees fit, consistent with planning and zoning regulations. The position also takes some of the time-consuming issues off of your plate by making non-binding recommendations to the board.
So if, if, if you disagree with some of the planning and zoning regulations that have been approved, if you personally disagree with those, what, what's your, what's your position on that?
You're talking about something similar to, like the septic system deal, for example?
That's, that's probably a good example.
Well, I can't, I can't go back and change what's already done. If something comes up on that, I'll have my opinion. It may not agree with the, the board, you know, the rest of the board, or the rest of the commissioners, I should say, but I'm not exactly a yes man. I have my own opinions, and I think I have a right to express them, I guess.
Well, I guess where I'm getting at is, is the, the fair application of ordinances requires, in my belief in a way, that, that they're enforced equally to everyone, not just to a certain segment, or if I, you know, if I don't particularly like an ordinance, I, but that's what the, the ordinance says is yours, that is supposed to happen. It would seem like then it should be fairly applied to everyone.
It should be fairly applied to everyone, yeah.
Even if I disagree with the ordinance?
Right, yeah. There, there's times that I, I'm not going to agree with something that comes up, but it's, it's still a vote-type deal, and I may state my opinion, but they're still going to vote on it in the end, and the majority is going to rule on it, so...
Thank you.
I'm going to just inject something here. It's kind of a personal editorial. We just talked about changing laws that we didn't feel were effective, and in my opinion, changing ordinances that are not effective or appropriate is also our responsibility and Planning and Zoning Commission members' responsibility.
I would agree with that.
Thank you. I, I wouldn't intend to go in with the idea to try to change ordinances as such, you know.
Well, frankly, I think that's part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's responsibility. If they see there is a problem with the planning and zoning ordinance, that, to bring that to the board, to say, this, this seems to be a problem, here's where we need to try to fix it by, I mean, I think that's part of their job, too.
But I, I just don't want to, I just don't want to get the, have the board get the feeling that I'm applying for the position to make change... feeling that I'm applying for the position to make changes on things that I didn't like in the past. I guess that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Busch.
What qualifications and experience do you have that would make you a good Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Well, I'm a Korean War-era veteran. Uh, that seems to give anyone that serves a, an extra quality. I spent thirty years installing telephone central equip, or central office equipment for AT&amp;T, uh, thirteen years in management and another thirteen years as in charge of a crew of install, or installation crew. I was a manager and operator of a housing development water company for eleven years up on Rimrock Highway where I live. Uh, then later, I owned and operated Elk Creek Water Company near Piedmont, another housing development, for nine years. I owned and operated Black Hills Golf Car Company for seventeen years, concurrent with the water company positions, they were done at the same time, in other words. Uh, the twenty years of, in the public water business required heavy interface with the public and the D E N R at the state government level. I've always been in, in a leadership or decision-making position pretty much all my life.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Gail, my question, I guess if I'd have thought about this a little bit, I'd have a little different question, but I think you've already answered it in your, uh, discussion with Commissioner Holloway's, uh, question that he had. But my question is, is please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make your decisions?
Well, in addition to what I, what we already covered, study the issue at hand, listen to all the verbal testimony and discussion with due consideration to what is legally and morally right. Don't rush to a poor decision. If more time or information is needed to study the issue, ask for the information or continuance. Uh, don't have a dictator-like attitude with the public. Be prepared to compromise. Use good common sense. Uh, verifiable, verifiable facts carry far more weight with me than mere opinions by so-called educated people.
Okay, thank you.
Last question, how would you promote Pennington County in the public?
Well, that's a question that we don't really, wouldn't really have a whole lot to do with, but all, almost all of the interface with the public would be during, during the normal meetings and with those involved in planning and zoning issues and, and those observing in the audience, of course. I would hope that my votes and decisions will be considered fair to the public, reflect well in Pennington County, and make your job easier. Uh, in closing, I would have a lot to learn about planning and zoning ordinances, just as any new applicant would or appointee would. I believe in term limits. I would only serve one three-year term. Uh, there are plenty of others waiting in the wings for an opportunity to serve, as we found out today. Uh, I would consider it a privilege to serve and I ask for your vote.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have one more question.
Sure.
It appears to me that you've been reading from your paper. Do you have these questions ahead of time?
Say that again, please.
It appears to me that you've been reading all these answers. Did you have these questions ahead of time?
Yes, from last year.
From last year, we asked the same questions?
Yes.
And I can speak to that one, too. When I called and made the arrangements with the applicants, if they asked me what the questions were, I did tell them.
Well, then what do we have them standing in the hall for? I don't get it. Okay, thank you.
The, the reason they're standing in the hall is so that they don't have to listen to all the previous answers. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Who's, who's number three?
Dan.
Dan, do you want to get number three?
Who's, who's number three?
State your name, please.
Joshua Bush.
Okay. You're going to, each commissioner will ask you one question, Joshua.
All right.
Start with Commissioner...
I get to start, Joshua, and, and thank you for your interest in this. I, I really appreciate it. Um, can you tell us why you applied for the position on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah, um, what a lot of, you know, I hear people talking about politics at the national level or the state level and, you know, I, I was reading a book and it, it kind of pointed that most of your day-to-day decisions, how you live, is made by the local community government, and I have absolutely no idea how that operates. I mean, I'm seventeen years old and I'm, I'm not exactly well-versed in how all of this happens, so I want to become knowledgeable about how decisions are made and why decisions are made, instead of just accepting it.
That's great. That's commendable for a seventeen-year-old. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm, Joshua, I'm impressed with your, uh, letter that you sent.
Thank you.
You've done a nice job with that. What do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Um, I'm not too aware of what exactly the Planning and Zoning Commission does. I've tried to look online and see if the responsibilities were listed, and, um, I think that the biggest responsibility would report, um, the most accurate information that they can and do the most research. That way, um, you don't have to worry about that as well as everything else that you have going on, because I understand that you're extremely busy, as is, so you need people that you can trust to collect all of the information.
One other, um, kind of a follow-up to that, you know, I noticed in your, in your letter you sent to us that you're, you'll be a senior next year at, at, I think it was Douglas, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, the Planning Commission meets twice a month, Monday mornings, at nine o'clock. Is that going to create a difficulty for you?
Um, I think that I can work around that with my schooling schedule. Obviously, they'll give some leeway because Douglas is very open to people working out in and with the community. I'm not skipping school, like, every day so that I can go hang out with my friends or whatever, so, um, I, we'll tackle that, or I'll tackle that if need be when it comes to it, so...
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
What qualifications and experience would, do you have that would make a good Pennington County Planning and Zoning Commissioner? We realize you're seventeen, so your experience probably isn't quite as much as some of these others, but what would you say your primary qualifications are?
I think that the, um, primary would be my debate experience, because we've, we're given a topic, um, and we had to prepare within a month and know pretty much everything about that topic. I, I see the binders in front of you and that's about the size of research that we had to do and retain all of that information and understand it, and I think that's, will certainly help, um, towards the planning and zoning. Um, and it's all something new that you can learn and, um, when it's completely new, I tend to at least absorb that information and I've been sitting, watching this meeting and it's, it's actually kind of thrilling watching all, how this happens, so...
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joshua, thanks for applying. I appreciate your willingness to, to help. Um, just to say, not to be negative or positive, just, uh, reading your bio, whether you're appointed to this board or not, I would suggest that you keep going forward with your plan there, that you instill the date.
Thank you.
My question is, please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make decisions?
Um, the decision-making process that I use is, um, you, you collect the facts. You have to know the whole story first. You can't just jump into it, and then you go along with some assumptions that you might be able to make, and then, um, you list a set of possible solutions. Um, and then, with all of those possible solutions, you, you test and see which one of those solutions is going to be the best and most effective, um, both in, you know, you want it to be speedy, but you also don't want it to be sloppy, so you find that median with that problem, with that solution, and then you can test that solution against your problem, um, and then you pick an alternate just in case that solution doesn't work and that way you're prepared for whatever happens.
Okay, thank you.
Joshua, how, how would you promote Pennington County with, in the public or with the public?
Um, I think that I would go out and since I'm younger, uh, I have a connection to a lot of younger people and that's really where you have to start getting interest in it. Um, so if I would be part of the zoning and planning commission, uh, I would be able to, you know, talk to people my age about it, get them excited, um, because they're just, they're the new voters that really haven't figured out which way they want to vote yet, or they haven't really made their decisions about whether or not they actually want to vote, so I have that opportunity to step in and say, "Hey, this is what I've been doing the past year, the past couple of years," and, uh, through the Pennington County.
Thank you very much. Thanks for applying.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, he's a great kid.
Are you having fun?
Ah, Joyce, we are.
Last night and again this morning.
Each commissioner will ask you a, a question. We'll start with Nancy.
Well, Joyce, thank you for applying. We really appreciate you doing that. And, and we'd kind of like to know why it is that you applied, did apply for the job.
Okay, um, I'll try to be brief because I know you don't want to spend a lot of time. You have quite a few of us. Um, I'll give you a little background. I retired a number of years ago and had a high-profile position where I didn't govern my own calendar personally or at work, and I decided I wouldn't volunteer for anything when I retired. I didn't even want to use a calendar, but, uh, I did a few things where I was helped by an organization and I, and I'm good at that. Then, as time went by, I did volunteer for some things that were way outside my comfort zone in healthcare, and, uh, got involved, found out that I had some skills that really did work, even if it wasn't in, in areas where I had spent my profession, and found them interesting. And then, as you know, I've been involved with the Planning and Zoning Commission over the last year or so and have sat through a lot of meetings. You've seen me a number of times. I'm intrigued by the process, by the decisions that are made, how they're made and so forth. And of course, I believe, as I think I stated in my letter, that we should have an orderly use of the land. Uh, that's important, and, uh, we need to preserve some aspects for the future, I think. And of course, that gets into planning and zoning. And I stated in my letter, and, uh, this is honestly true, I have no big mission or, um, agenda to accomplish, okay? Um, it's interesting to me, it's different. I found out I can do things that are different. Um, I have no huge agenda. I don't know if that's good or bad, as I said in my letter. So, does that answer?
It certainly does, thank you, Joyce.
What do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Okay, um, I think, just to sum it up, I, I read the Planning and Zoning Commission Comprehensive Plan, and, uh, on page thirty-three, under Future Land Use, it's number six, there are five goals, um, and I'm assuming that the Planning and Zoning Commission follows that comprehensive plan, although it maybe should be updated in areas that's ten years old. But those five, um, five goals, I think, are the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to make the initial decision and then pass it on to you for final decision. Uh, in addition to that, I think it's a responsibility of a member of that commission to be a responsible citizen, to be respectful of others, um, to use common sense. I'm a big person using common sense. Be professional, that kind of thing as well. But I think just as a commission as a whole, those five goals look real good. Now, if you want me to go through those, I can, but I'm sure you're probably familiar with them.
That's fine, thank you.
Joyce, what qualifications and experience do you have that would make you a good Pennington County Commissioner?
Okay, I, I think in my letter, I tried to outline, um, my qual, my qualifications. Uh, if you've got, and I won't add to those, if you have questions about them, I'll be happy to answer. As far as my experience, I'll give you a little bit of background. By profession, I'm a registered nurse and, uh, retired, okay? So I, and I worked my entire professional life, with the exception of three years cumulative. I had a couple of babies and we moved a few times, and so, uh, I had some gaps in there, but only three years in all that time, if you put them all together. Um, I was employed from the time I graduated from college until I retired, except for those three years. And, uh, my experiences started out in hospital, which is pretty typical. I did community health nursing and I've got fairly broad experience in that. Uh, I taught nursing students. I worked at the university in Brookings, but the, my, the majority of my professional career was spent, spent within state governments. Uh, I started out with the state of South Dakota and then moved to Kansas and spent fifteen years there and retired. And, so I'm very experienced within state government. And as I worked within both states, I was successful, I moved up and had very responsible, high-profile positions in both states. But, uh, the, the education of a professional nurse may not seem to fit this, but I worked in positions where nursing was sort of collateral. My administrative experience and everything else that I held, uh, really was what I used day-to-day, but that nursing education and experience is very solid. Teaches you a lot of things that work well in settings other than strict healthcare settings as people usually see them, hospitals, nursing homes and so forth.
Thank you.
Good morning, Joyce.
Good morning.
Thanks for applying and taking your time to try to help out the Planning and Zoning Commission in Pennington County. Appreciate that. Uh, my question is, is please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make your decisions?
Okay, um, first of all, um, my last position in the state of Kansas, my major decisions were made when, uh, the problem was not within the purview of staff or the question was not within the purview of staff to make the decision. Uh, so, uh, this I would see the same. The staff has certain areas of responsibility and decision-making, but then the commission has to take it from there. So first, I would want background from the staff. I would want to know what decision had to be made, for example. This is a rezone or whatever. And then the background from the staff, factual, um, and that would be my starting place. Second, I know there will be a learning curve and I will have to learn a lot about some areas, so I want to do some study to get background to see what already was outlined in the decision-making process. For example, the other day, I heard Karen Hall specifically state, "We can make decisions based on these points only," and one of the things that was before them. So I'm sure there's some information there that would be helpful. Uh, so I need to know policies and procedures from within the department. Then, I might do some research on my own. Uh, I'm very curious and I want to know exactly what it is I'm looking at. Uh, the maps and all, pictures and all that kind of thing are helpful, but I'd probably, uh, if it was contentious at all, want to go out and visit a location, maybe talk to some people, uh, get there thinking about it. Then, uh, I'm assuming that this commission is governed by the Open Meetings Act, uh, and so, uh, within the parameters of that, I would want to visit with other commission members if it was allowed. And so within the parameters of that, I would want to visit with other commission members if it was allowed. As a new person, it always helps to go to those who are experienced because they've got a lot of background, a lot of knowledge about things. Then, as it was presented before the commission, I would listen to the people who wanted whatever the action was. Say it was a variance, home occupation, rezone, vacation, home rental, whatever. I would listen to them. Then I would listen to the proponents and opponents. And out of that, and ask pertinent questions. And I'm not afraid to ask questions of the staff, other commissioners or the public, if I think they're pertinent. I would try to win over the facts from the conjecture because as you all know, there's a lot of that, especially if it's a contentious decision. So I get the facts in the open. I can tell you that I'm more likely to listen to full-time residents and property owners in the county than I am to others. So I don't know if that's an important point or not, but I found myself doing that. Those who vote and pay taxes here have more of an impression on me than others. There are some instances where other input would be important too, and then make a decision and vote.
Thank you.
Last question, how would you promote Pennington County in the public?
Okay, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the western part of the state, okay? I was raised West River, so I'm a big fan. And I'm a big fan of the Black Hills in this area. And since I moved back here in two thousand and two, I have a great house and I have a lot of company. I'm a tremendous tourist guide. So these counties, all up and down the western part of the state, all the way over to the river, because my family's ranch is in northwest Danley County, we go there. So I'm a big fan of the county. So there's no problem in promoting this area of the state. And I think when my guests leave, they also are very positive. There's a lot to do here. Then the other point to that is my experience with the employees of Pennington County, and I don't know exactly what your intent is on this question, but my experience with the employees of Pennington County has been positive. I've, they're always very helpful, very forthright, very prompt. Scott Goffey, for example, has been tremendous in helping us with the Pine Beetle Project. Even minor little things that I think, oh, you know, he doesn't need to take time to do this. And he does. He's been very good. That's an example. And having come from within the employment of government for so many years, I have a sense of the thought process, the position that employees are in. And overwhelmingly, they do a good job. Being a government employee often is very thankless. And all you hear is the criticism. So I am supportive of the employees as well. If there was an instance where I had a situation, I would certainly take care of that. But in this county, my experience has been very positive. Okay?
Thank you.
Number five.
That would be it?
Oh, I'm done. Am I done? Well, thank you. Not even any questions? Okay.
Morning.
Hi.
Each commissioner will ask you one question.
Okay.
Start with Nancy.
Hi, Lori. Thanks for reapplying. My question has to do with why you did apply for the position on the Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Well, as I stated in my letter for reapplication, the reason I've reapplied is because I've, I have the flexibility of my schedule in order to, it does take a lot of time to participate. Some of our meetings run three and four hours and preparation time is also required. I found it very enjoyable and interesting. And I think that, I think that what I bring to the commission is an ability to absorb the facts and make an informed decision.
Thank you.
Lori, what do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, what I've seen in my year that I served is that we make recommendations on ordinances and, you know, changes that need to be made. We approve the actions based on the staff recommendations. And we consider, in that process, we consider the needs, I guess, of the public and also those individuals involved.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna change my question a little bit because you're reapplying. And a little bit ago, under Nancy, you said something about what you bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And what do you bring to the Planning and Zoning Commission that is useful and helpful?
Okay, again, I think what I bring is my background. I've worked for a variety of private corporations and also in state and county government. I've been involved in several committees. I was on a Forest Service committee. I've been involved and I took Leadership Rapid City. I'm involved in activities in my church. I think I have a kind of a wide base of where I can get input from people on certain issues. Also, I have a degree in civil engineering. And part of the civil engineering training is we learn how to analyze a problem, to consider the different interests and to come up with different options and to choose to move toward a win-win situation.
Thank you.
Morning, Lori.
Hi.
Thanks for reapplying. My question is, please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make your decisions?
Well, I think I've already described that, but I'll do that again. You know, first, you have to define the situation and the problem. You have to find out if you have the information, you need to make your decision. You might need to go ask some other people for additional information. You can look at the different options you have when you make a decision and look at the positive and negative impacts of that. I think it's really important to try to come up with a win-win solution to any problem.
Thank you.
Last question, how would you promote Pennington County in the public?
Well, having been on the commission for a year, I've had the opportunity to describe that to my friends who are going now, do you work, do you do this for the city or is it the county? You know, and they'll talk about certain situations and I'll be able to tell them, that's a county issue and this is a city issue and this is why. So I think I've been a pretty good advocate, you know, just explaining the government process to people. And also asking for their input. You know, like if I know someone lives in a part of the county where an issue's impacting them, I'll ask them, what do you think about this? You know, it seems like, it seems like people, you know, want this. Is this something you want for your particular property? It's also given me the opportunity to encourage others to participate in volunteer activities or other appointed activities or committees and to go to hearings and say, you know, let people know what your, what your interest is. And I feel like I've supported the decisions because when, you know, even if I'm against a certain thing the commission votes on, I can explain the process to them and why the decision happened that way. So I feel like I've been an advocate for the county.
Thank you.
I just had one other question.
We'll go to the next candidate.
Okay.
I just have one other question.
Excuse me.
You say you, your friends, you've had your friends find out that you're serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
They still talk to you.
Do they ever question your mentality?
Yeah, they kind of go.
You think you're crazy or something?
They kind of go, do they pay you? It's like, yeah, they pay me twenty-five dollars a meeting, you know?
We knew it was the high wages.
Yeah, it's, you know, I need the income.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Morning.
Good morning.
Each commissioner will ask you one question. So introduce yourself, please.
Okay, my name is Robert Tomac, officially Robert Tomac, but better known to all my friends and enemies as Jack Tomac.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, Jack, thanks for, for applying for the position. And that's my first question, why did you apply?
Well, one of the biggest reasons I applied is that you hear so much about giving back to your community. I recently retired from the fire department. And as a retired person, I have a little bit more time on my hands now. And I thought, well, I live in the valley and there's a position on the commission open. Why don't I apply and I can start giving back to the community that I've served and, and beyond that, actually. The community I served was specifically Rapid City, but be able to serve the entire county in this position.
Thank you.
Jack, what do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I would say that the main, primary function would be to review and pass forward to the commission, to the county commissioners yourselves, the recommendations based on what has been proposed. Enforcement of ordinances, variances that come before, that maybe come before the commission, planning commission, as well as the county commissioners to make decisions on. To create, continue with the ordinances and enforce them those, and maybe even writing additional or passing and writing additional ordinances to make sure that all development and progress within the county continues at a fair plane, at the same plane, that would be fair to everyone.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Just still morning. What qualifications and experience do you have that would make you a good Pennington County Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
As I pointed out in my letter of application, I retired from the fire department. In the last ten years, in working for the fire department, I worked in the fire prevention division. I worked with developers, surveyors, engineers, engineering firms, as well as individual engineers, and the planning department of the city in helping developments and engineers and various different projects come forward to make sure that they were compliant with all of the ordinances and the criteria that was set forth for the city. To advance these developments, make sure that they were compliant with the standards that have been set forth, not just by the city, the county, the state, but by, you know, national standards.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's still morning, so I'll say good morning again.
Yes.
My question is, and I think I already have the answer, but please describe your, describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make your decisions?
How do I make my decisions? I want to review. I want to become familiar with the issue at hand and do my research. I want to make sure that I'm well aware of all of the issues at hand. Do an extensive research project, you know, on the project. In this instance, what the, the planning department has put forth and, you know, and the, any issues that may come forth, as well as, you know, any additional research. And then base it on what, how does that apply? Are there ordinances? Are there standards that are applicable to this? And where would they, where does this fit in meeting those ordinances or standards or whatever might be applicable in governing that? Pretty much everything is based off of ordinances or standards or stuff of that nature. So it would fall back on where is it at with, in compliance with those issues? Is this issue compliant with that ordinance or how close can we get or where is it at? And then my decision would be based off of my research and how it concurs with those, those rules and ordinances and so.
Okay.
Last question, how will you promote Pennington County in the public?
Oh, I promoted Pennington County for twenty years that I've been a resident here. How will I, I just, it's a fantastic place to live. How will I promote it? We're a progressive county. We have got, we got the world at our fingertips right here. We've got everything that anybody would ever want. Promoting it is just sitting around telling people what it's like, should they ask. And also, in the public's eye, you know, be positive about it. You know, there's nothing, I don't see anything negative with Pennington County or the state of South Dakota, let alone Rapid City, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
Morning.
Howdy. It's high noon, I guess.
It's real close.
Oh.
Yep, high noon. And each commissioner will ask you one question. Start with Nancy.
George, thank you for applying. And that really is my, the first question we're asking today is why you did apply for the position?
As I said a year ago, a number of reasons, and I'll keep it really short. The two primary reasons is one, not just for me, but for the, for the community. I think that the planning commission ought to have two egg people always, one west and one east. There hasn't been an egg person in my remembrance since John McMahon, it's been over ten years. I'm an egg person and have an egg background for many, many, many years. And I think that's the primary reason I'm applying, is to have an egg voice. And secondarily, now that Charlie Johnson is leading the commission, the planning commission should always have a veteran of the six members, especially in this county, which has the base and a huge veteran population. Many of us live rural. And I think those two reasons, an egg person and a veteran, there's other reasons, but those are my two primary reasons. Thank you much.
Mr. Ferby, what do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
There's just one responsibility, the way I read the law and its advisory capacity or recommending capacity. And unfortunately, studying the law, it doesn't even really say that. You have to infer. From title, from title, or it's chapter two of Title XI. Basically, you have to infer or imply or draw from those statutes. The planning commission is a recommending body and that's a recommending body only.
Thank you.
Morning, George, or afternoon, I guess now. What qualifications and experience do you have that would make you a good planning and zoning commissioner? And I know you've set out quite a bit of stuff in your resume, but if you, anything else you want to add or expand upon, feel free.
Not really. I think you all know me and you all know that I've had a lot of experience. Twenty years of decision-making in Air Force and twenty-five, twenty-six years now on my ranching business. And Lindell and I are about to make some decisions here pretty soon on hay and cows, aren't we, Lindell? We went through eight years of that and we were, golly, I thought we were, we were out of the woods after three years of decent rain. And now we're right back into the decision-making mode and that's coming real soon.
Thank you, George.
You bet.
Good afternoon, George. You just said something about decision-making, and so that's my question. Please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make your decisions?
I try to follow the classroom model that I learned fifty years ago. And it's, you first identify the problem, you gather data with as much time as you have available. You analyze the data and you search for alternatives. You weigh the alternatives, make a decision. And I can give you lots of examples of my twenty years in Air Force and my twenty-five years of ranching, but don't have time. Go ahead. Thank you.
And just to clarify, you mentioned earlier John McMahon and also John Colvin was on at the same time. I helped get them both appointed.
It's been at least ten years, right?
No, they were still on there after I came on the commission. I don't know exactly, but they were both there for.
Time gets away, it can.
Last question, George, how would you, how will you promote Pennington County to the public?
As I said a year ago, I didn't understand the question and I still really don't understand the question as such. I don't think that its government position, whether appointed, elected or hired to promote, the government should follow the laws that were set forth, the laws and rules and regulations. And I've studied, here again, chapter two of Title XI. And I can't find anywhere in there where the planning commission should be promoting anything.
Thank you. Number eight.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Introduce yourself, and each commissioner will ask you a question.
I'm Jeff Swett, and I'm an attorney at Costello Porter Law Firm here in Rapid City.
Jeff, thank you very much for applying for the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and that is the first question, we want to hear from you, why you applied.
Well, just kind of as the general comment to start, I think it's important for people to volunteer time in their community and to give back to the community and, you know, assist the residents and represent them, but, you know, I don't think that's enough in and of itself, I think you also need to be interested in the areas that you volunteer in. And I have, you know, a great deal of interest in planning, and as a lawyer, you know, analyzing and following rules, and so I feel like this is a good way for me to, you know, give my time to the community in an area that I'm interested in.
Thank you.
Maybe just a little bit of a follow-up from that, you say you have a interest in planning and zoning, can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, just, I guess kind of planning in general, I've had quite a bit of experience through my law degree and my MBA that I received in planning, for the law schools on the five-year strategic planning committee, and I served on that committee with the law school as part of my MBA. We did a business plan for a soccer team that has been very successful the last few years, we did, you know, just the entire business plan for them setting that up, and we worked with the Community Foundation in Knoxville as well, we did a marketing plan for them, it was more focused than the one for the soccer team. And also, I did a financial analysis in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, for a nuclear reactor that they were considering putting in, and so as part of that planning process as well, and my part of that proposal was actually included in a report to the Department of Energy in Washington DC.
Thank you. The question that I have then is, what do you think are the main responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I think the main responsibilities are kind of twofold, first of all, is, you know, there's ordinances and rules that need to be followed and analyzed, to make sure that, you know, planning and zoning is in accordance with those, with those rules and ordinances, but I also think on the other side of that is, growth is very important to our county and our community, so you need to work with those, work with those people, and, you know, ensure that those rules and ordinances are being followed, while at the same time encouraging growth and expansion of business in our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, your resume set out some experience and some education, but what other qualifications and experience do you have that would make you, you think, a good planning and zoning commissioner?
You know, as I mentioned, I think the planning that I did previously, but also as a lawyer, I'm familiar with rules and ordinances and, you know, making sure that those are followed, and a large part of my practice to date does have to do with real estate, it's more in the real estate transactions, leases, liens, that type of thing, not so much in the zoning and ordinances, but I think, you know, those two areas, as well as, you know, just my attention to detail and, you know, excitement and interest in working this area, I think would make a, make a good fit for the planning commission.
Thank you.
Jeff, when I looked down your file and saw that you came from Platte, South Dakota, and you just leaves me an absolute opening for planning and zoning, do you think it was a real good idea from planning and zoning perspective to put a runway between two cemeteries in Platte, South Dakota when the runway was built?
Probably not. I was not a part of that planning process.
Thank you. Been there, done that, dodged those holes. My next, my real question is, please describe your decision-making process, meaning how do you make decisions?
Well, I think kind of in my law practice, you know, the first thing I always do is go to the rules, and, you know, look through the rules and, and, you know, see kind of as a general guideline, you know, what needs to be followed, but then on top of that, you know, to talk to the people who you will be making a decision about, and also just ask for other people that I may know for advice and wisdom on different issues, that I've been fortunate, very fortunate over the years to have many people who have, you know, given time to help me and help me make decisions and give me advice, so I would be very willing to do that for other people as well.
Thanks for both answers.
Last question, how would you promote Pennington County in the public?
You know, I think it's all about being active in the community and available, you know, like I just said, to be open to questions and being able to assist people, you know, just get out in the community and, you know, be active in different, different events and volunteer for different things, and also at the same time having an open door or be willing to pick up the telephone and, you know, just talk to people and, you know, assist them in any way that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have had the benefit of interviewing all eight candidates.
Do you want to bring them all back in?
Yeah. The question now is how do we narrow down our choices to two people, and Ollie, did you have any thoughts on how we proceed? We have these ballots.
Well, you can certainly just do your vote for two. If there is a winner, we can designate the top one and then narrow it down between the next two.
What's the commission think?
You're going to, you're going to pick these up, Ollie, and then?
So each person mark theirs and.
Two in there.
Two, correct? Yeah, vote for two.
I don't know what this sneezing's all about. Not too much grass out there playing golf?
Oh, hey man, the green stuff, green stuff.
Not the brown stuff, the green stuff.
It's good to take the rest of the day.
I couldn't have just asked for that question. Look at my, my spray drink, too. Fuck up inside. That's a good look to this room.
All right, you do have two winner winners, Lori Litsen received four votes and William McCollum received three votes.
We need a motion?
Who's going to make the motion?
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to appoint Lori Litsen and William McCollum to the planning and zoning positions that are open.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to verify the election and appointment of Lori Litsen and William McCollum to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Post-motion carried. Thank you, folks, for your time and interest and. Quick break. Quick break, yeah, like five minutes or seven or something. Okay, a seven-minute break, starting. And the next item will border, and at this point in time, turn it over to Dan.
Good afternoon, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director, I believe you need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
We'll move. Second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into the Board of Adjustment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post-motion carried.
First item is a variance request, 1204 Canadian Pacific Railroad, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, this is to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to .56 acres, 3.17 acres, 37.42 acres, 6.34 acres, and 37.55 acres in a general ag zoning district. This item had been before you, I believe you discussed it at your last county board meeting, it was continued from the last county board in order for the applicant to be here to address some issues and to look into some legal matters as far as granting this variance request. I don't know how much specifics you want me to go into, or if you just want to go right into the discussion, we do have some findings that were typed up, Jay Alderman and Patrick Grody from the State's Attorney's Office did put some findings together to address some of the concerns that we had, that were brought up.
You're referencing the objections or questions that were raised at our previous meeting relative to these actions, and then, of course, with the action being deferred till today, the State's Attorney's Office had time to examine some of the questions, and I think it'd be a benefit to the board to have that information now.
About hurt you, didn't it? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the commission would be, I do have some proposed findings, that knowing that this matter was before the commission a couple weeks ago, knowing that a staff report was available to the commission and the public, knowing that there was some discussion that took place, and there'd probably be some additional discussion today, with that background and that information already out and part of this variance request, and frankly, three more variance requests that'll be coming up under the consent calendar, with that background, I do have some findings, my question, and it doesn't make any difference to me how you'd like to proceed with this, but there's three variances before you right now, there's the 1204, which Dan just read the specifics of, then there's 1205 and 1206, each have a little bit different lot size variance to them, but my findings that I would propose, and I intend to read to you here today, are identical as to all of them. So if you are interested in taking up, Dan could read all three variances at once into the record, and you could do one vote on all three, because my findings are the same as to all three, or if you'd like, you can take one at a time, and I'll read what my proposed findings are, and you can vote on the variances one at a time, because my proposed findings don't change, your choice, I guess.
What's the issue, is the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I could make a motion to this issue, and that would be to approve all three variances as recommended by the State's Attorney.
Is there a second?
Now, your wording was to approve as opposed to dealing with them all. All three at the one time.
All three.
Yep.
If I can assist with that, I guess, for the record, if Dan could read the three variances that are listed in the agenda, then I could propose what I believe to be some findings, then I guess could entertain a motion, whether you want to approve the variances with the findings, open it up to discussion of the public, and then take a vote on it, that's probably the way I would recommend to do it.
So the question really, to the commission at this point, do you want them all dealt with separately, one by one by one, or are you comfortable with a package, package deal?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should bundle them.
Bundle, that's a good word.
Mainly because they're all the same, other than the size of the lot, so, you know, instead of going through it three different times, we can go through it once, and they're all going to be the same, chances are our vote is going to end up being the same on each one of them, so.
Any objection to bundling?
Hearing none. That's why I made the motion, the way I did it is to bundle them, all in one package and get on with the program.
But without a formal motion, general consensus to bundle, bundle away.
Item B of the bundle package is variance request 1205 Canadian Pacific Railroad, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 3.82 and 3.67 acres. Item C is also a variance request by the same Canadian Pacific Railroad and Fisk Land Serving as the agent, to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 1.55 and 1.75 acres in a general ag zoning district.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, with that then, I guess my, from the State's Attorney's Office, my proposed findings would include, to include in the findings by reference the planning director's staff report that accompanies the variance request, to include that and make that part of the findings that I'm proposing. In addition to that, I want to read six specific findings for your consideration as follows. Number one, the variance applications are made for the purpose of plating and transferring the subject properties to Canadian Pacific Railroad, the properties will be used for the construction of railroad track. Number two, South Dakota law grants railroads the power of eminent domain, this places the current landowners in the position of either negotiating a voluntary transfer of the property or facing a possible condemnation action, denying any variance necessary to effectuate a voluntary land transfer constitutes an unnecessary or undue hardship for both the current landowners and Canadian Pacific Railroad. The specific circumstances of these properties, as described, as Dan read them, in the staff report, and in the staff report, do not apply generally in general agricultural zoning districts in Pennington County, that's number three. Number four, this variance, or these variances, which grant specifically, let's see, these variances would be granted specifically so the property may be used for railroad purposes and do not have the effect of allowing a use otherwise prohibited in general agricultural districts. Number five, for the reasons set forth, given paragraph number two, that the railroads have the power of eminent domain, and in addition to the remarks of the staff report, strict application of the lot size requirements would work an unwarranted and unnecessary hardship upon the current landowner and upon the prospective transferee, that being the railroad. And number six, allowing a smaller lot size for railroad use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinances, and is not injurious to the surrounding neighborhood or to the public interest in welfare. I would propose these findings for consideration by the board, and that if the motion were to be approved, that it would include Dan's report as part of the findings and the authorization for the board chairman to sign off on these findings as part of the motion. I'm here to answer any questions I can, and Dan can help me on specifics, I guess, under the, with regard to the variance that's 1204, 1205, and 1206 that are before you right now.
Any questions?
I think I would recommend that unless there are any questions, that we, someone make a motion, we get it seconded, and then it's open for discussion by anyone and everyone, and then we will vote on the motion, up or down.
I would make a motion to approve the three variances, has been read, and to authorize the chairperson's signature on the findings, as prepared by our State's Attorney, including with that, the staff reports.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, does anyone wish the motion restated for clarity? If not, we're open for discussion. If not, we're open for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Wilson, appearing on behalf of Jensen Ranch, a neighbor whose land abuts the Shell property, which has two of these smaller parcels. I've, Commissioner Holloway, you weren't here last time, but I, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through everything I said last time. I gave a handout last time, I presume you've had access to that. My comments are these. There's absolutely no findings here to support at least three of the findings proposed by the State's Attorney, that the property is going to be used for construction of railroad track, that it's going to be used for railroad purposes, or that the lot size for a smaller use is in the public interest, because the only evidence before you is that this railroad has no plans to build this, no financing, no coal contracts, no contract with users. They've abandoned their attempts to condemn property in Wyoming. That was an exhibit I gave you last time. The letter to the, I think it was the Mayor of Huron, said we have no plans, I'm sorry, Patricia Jacobs and Peter, no plans to build the railroad, and should circumstances ever arise, then we'll let you know. So, I don't know why we're here, frankly, but we don't believe that there's factual support for your findings or legal support for the reasons I said last time. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Either for you, or Jay, or both? I mean, you fellows can show off your skills. If this kind of a purchase was being proposed in a county that didn't have planning and zoning, would a neighbor be able to intervene?
I don't think so.
I see.
I don't think so. I think that the neighbor would have no right to intervene, or anybody to say anything, unless you were trying to reduce the lot size from forty to three. And that's why I think that we have the right to stand here and object.
Okay, thank you. Jay, do you want to comment?
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I think it's the planning and zoning requirements that bring us here today. Otherwise, we'd be dealing with just state law regarding, like, eminent domain and what the railroad is gonna do, and who's specifically aggrieved by that action. But we're here today because our zoning does allow, and our, yeah, our zoning allowance allows anyone to contest essentially the action of the board, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
From the audience? I would say that we have no, we would have no objection if the lot size were forty. We'd have no right to object. If they were gonna buy forty acres from the Shells, we'd have no right to object here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners David Druck, Canadian Pacific Railway, thank you for your time reviewing this matter, and, you know, essentially, what we've done is we've made, you know, negotiated voluntary agreements with landowners to purchase parts of land, and we've worked out terms for that, and we have several landowners here that were at least the three parcels, and landowners, the owners of those parcels here today. You know, I mean, variances are needed and useful when situations don't fit, you know, the code. I mean, as you know, you can come up with pretty detailed rules, and you'll still come across something that doesn't fit your rules, and railroads kind of fall into that category when it comes to planning and zoning, because the rail corridors follow the topography of the land. We go based upon elevations, and where the natural features, you know, allow for the construction. So when we do that, and in situations like this, we don't follow property lines, and what we end up doing is, you know, clipping off corners of lots and things like that, and we end up with these odd little parcels that, you know, taken in by themselves in isolation, you know, no one would go out and do that, but processes for variances like this are important to not to, to avoid taking the small view and look at the big view, in that, you know, we're assembling land, we're assembling corridors, we're paying money, you know, real money to real people that have agreed to sell their property, and the end result will be, you know, a corridor that, you know, far exceeds the forty acres. It's just, you know, skipping between different properties, and just as we're assembling things, it doesn't, doesn't fit the normal type of zoning provisions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Wilson has raised a good point, and some documentation and some evidence that said Canadian Pacific really is abandoning their building of the railroad, at least for the future, the near future. You got an answer?
Well, you know, one, the Wyoming hearings, you know, took place over a period of a year and a half, and involved hundreds of hours of testimonies and records, I mean, and stuff, and I don't think we want to relive that here. Basically, it's easy to take a statement and, you know, out of context, and try to, you know, draw your own conclusion from it. The, I mean, the only thing we really need to think about here is that, one, you know, what, you know, the plans are for the construction timing is really what we're talking about, isn't one of the elements for the zoning request, so it's not one of the criteria. The second thing is, it already has a process of its own. We've been through the SDB, and we've gotten approval, we've been to, you know, hearings in the state of South Dakota regarding eminent domain, and whether we have that, and, you know, lots of other hearings that I haven't been a part of. And third, these are voluntary transactions that we've struck with people that have, you know, we've reached terms, so it has the effect of both, you know, unduly interfering with our, our attempt to assemble the right of way, and, you know, and their decisions to what to do with their own land. So, I mean, you can pick out things, and I could speak to a lot of the history and the couple items that Mr. Wilson presented, but, you know, the reality is that it, the logic doesn't follow, that why would we go spend significant money with people to assemble land if we weren't still proceeding with the project? It just, that doesn't make sense. It comes to, what we call in law is an absurd result, is that we wouldn't spend money to do that if we're not still proceeding with the project.
Mr. Chairman? If I could ask you one question, sir? If, if this railroad construction should happen to fall through the cracks, what is your plans for the, what's the plans for the land then?
It's a good question. You know, with real estate, you basically then, you, you know, the rules change, the game plan changes, and you try to do the best, you know, you make the best outcome you can for your investment. I don't know, I mean, we'd have to look at what our opportunities were. I mean, personally, my feeling is that the corridor we're talking about now is, you know, a long area we call Wall Hill. We currently have a right of way that comes up through Wasta, and that goes up to Wall, and it's really steep, and we personally have to, right now, we have to split the train sometimes in order to get it up that hill, and we actually have trouble serving Rapid City with some of the freight. Some of the opportunities, in fact, I was on a conference call just a couple of months ago, where we had someone that wanted to build a distribution facility in Rapid City, and we couldn't serve them, because we couldn't handle that type of car down through Wall. So personally, I think that this segment of the corridor has value, even if the PRB plan, someone says, you know, we're not gonna do that, because it would provide an opportunity to reconstruct our approach through that area where it'll be, you know, what we like is a less than one percent grade. So I think that there, you know, my guess is that will be our first Plan B, would be to go forward with this segment anyways, just to improve our freight to Rapid City, which I think, you know, you talk about promoting Pennington County, that's, you know, that would be a huge boom, boon to Pennington County, to be able to bring in some of these commodities and markets that we can't right now. Then, second, you know, generally like anything else, you'd look for, you know, what's your best opportunity? You know, likely, one opportunity is to go back to the adjacent landowners, say, would you like to, you know, buy your land back? And my second question is, would you like to pay what we paid you for it? And I won't wait for the reply on that, but, you know, you know, so that's kind of, you know, that would be the process we'd take.
Well, I guess I was wondering, is there any, was there any provisions in the sale agreement for the current landowners to have the opportunity to buy back?
You know, you know, I'd have to go back to the actual agreements. You know, people, you know, those were things that were negotiated privately, and I don't really care to share, things like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holloway, I think probably the best approach would be to give it to nature conservancy.
We'd remove gray dogs.
So that you can give it to the federal government to raise variance.
How about putting a bicycle path in between Rapid City and the Badlands?
Wonderful idea. Go ahead, Jay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, two weeks ago, when this item was briefly discussed, I'm not aware of the entire scope of the discussion, but one of the, one of the hardships, I guess, that I would envision being the case, goes directly to the question of eminent domain. You know, at this point, the railroad certainly doesn't need anywhere near approaching forty acre lots. The landowners, it's, I guess I would assume, most all of them have no desire to sell that much land, because the railroad's not looking for that. If there weren't lot size variances given to this project, as we've discussed, essentially it would be back to the table of eminent domain, where the railroad would condemn just what they needed, and the landowner would be put through that process, and that just seems like somewhat of an absurdity, or an unnecessary expense, so I wanted to share that with you, I guess, part of the background of why the eminent domain process seems to be an undue burden when a voluntary transaction or transfer is being negotiated with the railroad, so just another reason or another thought to give consideration to the undue hardship.
Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Wilson, anything further?
I have a lot to say, but I'm not gonna belabor the point. If Mr. Alderman, if I had a forty acre tract out in the woods, and Mr. Alderman wanted to build an orchard, and we all thought that'd be great for Pennington County, he's got no current plans to build an orchard, and he came and said, I only want to buy three acres of Mike's lot, out in the middle of somewhere that doesn't have any access to roads or power or anything, and we, and you said, we all would sure like to have an orchard here in this county, but Jay's got no plans to build one. He can't really promise to build you one, except Plan B and Plan C, which is what you've got now, is a lot of fluff. You wouldn't let Mr. Alderman buy my three acres, I don't think, and so that's what we're here for, and I, I'm not gonna belabor the point, because I've said enough, and I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's funny you should bring that up, Mike, because that's exactly what happened a few years ago, and they did let the orchard go in.
They shouldn't have.
Anyone else? Is the commission ready to make a decision? We do have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, chair will call for a roll call vote.
Troutman?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Usgru?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, let's see, we come out of a board of adjustments?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn the board of adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Now we go to the planning and zoning consent calendar. Dan Jensen presiding.
There is, the rest of the items from planning and zoning is all on the consent calendar, however, we'd like to poll items G, H, and I, and that, all three of those are in regards to Canadian Pacific Railroad. And if you'd like, I can go through each of the items that are on the consent calendar that are, if you decide not to poll these or poll them, I don't know what you'd decide to do.
What's the wish of the commission?
Well, I have some I want polled, so.
Okay.
And it would be, I think I mentioned it earlier, but from our office, we would be proposing findings as well with these three variance requests, so I would also support pulling them from the consent calendar.
Any other items that you wish?
Yeah, I want to take N and O off.
Okay, so we have G, H, I, N, and O requested to be removed from the consent calendar. Anyone else have any they wish to have pulled? If not, the chair would entertain a motion that included those removals.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Just so we are clear, items G, H, I, and N, and O, is that correct?
Correct.
Have been removed in, or motion to remove. All in favor of removing those items, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Now we need a motion relative to the remaining items. Dan, do you want to cover them?
Sure, the board of commissioners uses the consent calendar to act as a non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. Quickly, the consent calendar is acted upon by one motion and a vote by the board. Items may be removed from the consent calendar and placed on a regular agenda at the request of the board members or a citizen. The consent calendar for planning and zoning contains the following items. Number D is a Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan, approval of a payment application, Jeff Liddell, and approval is recommended. E is a Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, approval of withdrawal, of a cost share funding for a participant agreement, approval is also recommended of that. Item F is a Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, authorization to advertise for cost share funds for BMP projects, approval is recommended. J is a layout plat, twelve dash twenty-three RMS load, Matt Keck, approval is recommended. Item K is a layout plat, twelve dash twenty-four for Robert and Cordelia Johnson, approval is recommended. Item L is a subdivision regulation variance, twelve oh eight for Dakota Mill and Grain, Bart Banks as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item M is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning request, twelve oh seven, and comprehensive plan amendment, twelve oh five for RMS load, Matt Keck, and that was to be continued until the finer, final and minor plat is filed.
You've heard the items on, remaining on the consent calendar, is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar. Do you need those repeated, or not? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we go to G, H, and I, and, thank you, can we do one motion to cover all three?
Yes, and that was gonna be my next discussion, as if you wanted to do that.
Go ahead.
Item G, H, and I are both, are all minor plat and subdivision regulation variances to waive plating requirements, all for Canadian Pacific Railroad, all in relationship to the variances that just got approved, and all the same applicant, but different landowners. And so I can go through each and every one, or just to make one motion to approve, again, there are findings that were typed up by Patrick Grody of the State's Attorney's Office, and Jay Alderman of the State's Attorney's Office, and they can be presented, Jay will be presenting those, but they're pretty much all the same, their findings are all the same for each and every subdivision regulation variance.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Essentially, a question to Dan, real quick, the only difference is the applicants?
Yes.
Okay. With that understanding, then I would like, just as I did moments ago, I'd like to propose some findings to the commission for their consideration with regard to these three variances.
Of make a correction, not the applicants, but the landowners.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that correction. If I may?
Yes, proceeding.
Again, as with the last one, I'd like to include it in the proposed findings, the, by reference, the addition of the staff report, the county staff report that Dan's office has prepared. In addition to that, it's my understanding that the request for waiver includes, the request to waive eight foot minor drainage and utility easement to be located along the interior side of all lot lines, to waive that all section lines be improved to ordinance fourteen standards, to waive that the applicant obtain and improve legal access to the property, to waive that the applicant submit percolation test results and soil profile hole information, to waive that a plat be submitted at a scale of not less than one inch equals one hundred feet, to waive that a major drainage easement for existing drainage be dedicated on the plat, and finally to waive that the applicant submit topography at five foot intervals. The findings that I would propose, in addition to the staff report, would be that, and I have seven specific, they're the same ones for all three of variance requests, that the variance application is made for the purpose of plating and transferring the subject properties to Canadian Pacific Railroad. The properties will be used for the construction of a railroad track. South Dakota law grants railroad the power of eminent domain. This places the current landowners in the position of either negotiating a voluntary transfer of the property or facing a possible condemnation action. Denying any variance necessary to effectuate a voluntary land transfer constitutes an undue hardship for both the current landowners and Canadian Pacific Railroad. Number three, as reflected in the staff report, requiring minor drainage and utility easements and major drainage easements would make construction of railroad tracks on the subject properties difficult, if not impossible. Number four, the subject properties currently have legal access through unimproved section lines. Because the properties will be used for railroad purposes, requiring that access to the property be improved and that section lines within the properties be improved is an unnecessary expense. Number five, it does not appear that the subject properties will be used for any purpose requiring an onsite wastewater treatment system. Requiring percolation tests and soil profile hole information is an unnecessary expense at this time. Number six, because of particular conditions of the subject properties as described above and in the staff report, there are, there would be an undue hardship to current landowners if the subdivision regulations were strictly enforced. And finally, number seven, granting the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare, will not be injurious to the surrounding properties, will not cause a substantial increase in public costs, and will not otherwise create non-conformity with Pennington County's zoning ordinances or comprehensive plan. That would be the proposed findings that I would offer with regard to all three variances request.
What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the variances and authorize the, pardon?
Isn't it the minor plat?
Or minor plat?
The minor plat in the subdivision regulation variances.
Okay. And authorize, to include with that, the findings as outlined by our State's Attorney and authorize the Chair person's signature.
And in addition, include in those findings?
The staff's report, in the staff's report.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Wilson, there you.
I just want to state my objection for the record for all the reasons previously stated before the Board of Adjustment in the previous two meetings, for the record.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain, we do have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Troutman?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carried. Now we go to item N.
Item N is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning request, twelve oh five and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, twelve oh three. Excuse me, Orville Davis and Lazy P Six Land Company is the applicant. This is to rezone thirty-five point eight eight acres from Highway Service District and General Ag District to General Commercial District and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map from Highway Service District to, in low density residential district to General Commercial District. Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning request and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment request.
Mr. Chairman, I, the reason I took this off is kind of twofold. One is, I still don't agree that we can have the first reading and public hearing of a rezon by consent calendar. I think we, that's, I know we give the public an opportunity to take it off the consent calendar if they want to. I'm not sure everybody understands all that and I think that a public hearing means a public hearing. Number two is, what Mr. Davis has done out there in the county at the end of Fifth Street is a shame. And I hate to see it expanded.
So at this point, south side of Fifth Street is Cody?
Yes.
It's just?
South side of Katrin.
Yes.
Is it not in the three mile limit?
It is, and it's actually adjacent to city limits. If he were to plat the property, it would be annexed into the city of Rapid City and then completely controlled by the city of Rapid City.
But isn't that going to happen sooner or later? I mean, that area?
It all depends on Mr. Davis.
And us.
Mr. Orville Davis.
Yes, yes.
Mr. What?
Orville Davis, not Ken Davis.
You're getting kind of picky, aren't you?
Well, down the road, I just don't want anybody to make any mistakes.
I see.
Well, they, no.
And once we rezoned into General Commercial, then there we go again. But that's my personal observations and that's how I'm going to vote.
And it does appear that that would be the logical zoning for that property out there. I mean, that is going to turn into General Commercial, isn't it?
I suspect it probably will.
It certainly appears to be the trend in the area, especially with Walmart and all the other commercial uses going across Katrin and inside city of Rapid City. And they are aware that if they're plating it, it would be annexed into the city of Rapid City.
How do the landowners feel about that out there, Jay?
I don't know, I'd have to ask someone.
Any further discussion? Chair would entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, since nobody's jumping right in there for a motion, why, why is N recommended for approval and O is recommended for denial?
I will go into that when we get to O.
Yeah, but don't, do they have any bearing on each other?
They're in the same, they're owned by the same landowner, but they're separate from each other. They're not adjacent to each other. They're kind of on opposite ends of the, his development. Access is an issue to the one, the second, and item O. There's a section line that provides the access, however, it does not meet current standards outlined in our subdivision regulations as far as the road being paved.
But if he goes to plat something, the city will require that, correct?
Yes. The city also, when they annex properties, they, they look at what the current zoning is in the county, but then they make their own decision as what they feel is appropriate zoning to that area.
Good.
And that was the reason why we denied the, our recommended denial of the rezoning on the item O is because of access. But we're recommending approval of the Comprehensive Plan until, until they improve that section line to the thirty foot, thirty-two foot wide paved surface. We could not recommend approval of that rezoning. But we do feel it is appropriate land use.
That's going to be a mandate, though, if they, if one they try to plat.
Yes, and I'm sure it's, well, the city's requirements are even more strict than the county's. The cities, I believe, is probably the same width, but would require curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
So, is the city then going to, if we require the hard surfacing of this narrow road and the city comes in after the plat and says, "He's got to make it this, plus curb and gutter and sidewalks," is that going to compound the cost?
Oh, I imagine that it would require more from the developer to improve those roads to that standard.
Okay, so what's best to do it, do it under our jurisdiction and then make him pay twice or do it under the city's jurisdiction, make him pay once?
They, I actually?
It takes years before the city ever gets involved in it.
I did talk to the applicant in regards to both items and they were actually okay with our recommendation as, or even Planning Commission's recommendation as to approve item N and deny the rezoning request and approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Okay. Now that you told me that, I'm with you.
Any other questions or comments? I, I may not be up to speed on these things, but it appears to me at least item N embraces or encompasses a dam and part of the drainage that goes on down to the mud bog or whatever it is at the corner. And I guess my concern is that some of these things that relate to developing land end up compounding drainage problems and things of that kind that the public ends up paying for later in a kind of a disjointed way. Was any consideration given to that in examining this issue?
Well, he had previously built Black Hills Boulevard is what she's calling it, but it's not officially named that because it's not platted. He did get a construction permit to build that road and he did address the drainage issues on that property. And I believe there is state law in place that you cannot affect drainage on and off the property to affect the neighboring property owners.
Well, so what you're telling me is that there was no formal evaluation of that in?
It was evaluated when he was going through the construction permit process and this was routed to the county highway engineer, drainage engineer, and he did comment on those, on the construction permit and of, which is in-house, it's administrative. So that was looked at.
But why would the county highway engineer be involved in Katrin Boulevard or anything on the other side of it? That water's got to go someplace. And beyond that puddle in the corner, where's it go from there?
Well, I believe it does go across Katrin Boulevard and into city limits. And that wasn't necessarily even looked at with this application. The construction permit was on that item N, on that thirty-five acres and what he did to the drainage there.
How does this fit into the Comprehensive Plan?
Comprehensive Plan actually, well, it doesn't meet it, then that's why he's doing a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to match it up so that we amend the Comprehensive Plan. So, and that was part of the recommendation also.
I have no further questions or comments. What's the wish of the commission?
Planning Commission did recommend approval of item N, both the Comprehensive Plan and the rezoning request, but did also recommend denial of the rezoning for item O and approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for item O.
That felt like action. Do you wish to hold these over till the next meeting?
We do, we're just going to have to make a decision then, aren't we?
Well, we seem to be stalled out.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion on item N to accept the Planning Commission and staff's recommendation for approval.
To do what again?
On item N, to accept the staff's recommendation and Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second? Why not?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the acceptance of staff recommendation on item N. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor, say aye.
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 I'm opposed.
Opposed?
Two opposed, carried three to two. Item O.
This is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning request, twelve oh six and Comprehensive Plan Amendment, twelve oh four. Orville Davis, Lazy P Six Land Company. This is to rezone twenty-four point zero three nine acres from Light Industrial to General Commercial District and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from Light Industrial to General Commercial zoning district. Planning Commission recommended to deny the rezoning request and recommended approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And as we discussed as previously, the reasons why staff even recommended that exact same way based upon the current access, which is a section line road. It is gravelled, but it does not meet the thirty-two foot wide paved surface as required by our subdivision regulations. And that was the reason why we recommended denial of the rezoning request. However, we did feel the commercial zoning was appropriate to the area, so we recommended that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment be approved. And until such time that road is improved to the thirty-two foot wide paved surface, we would recommend denial of the rezoning request. This was discussed with the applicant, they were aware of it and were okay with that recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So why, why approve just a part of it? Why not deny it all, let him come back with, with the improvements out there and then approve it?
Well, the Comprehensive Plan is a future plan of how you see the zoning could be in the future. And so it allows for him to come in and the next time just to apply for the rezoning request. Once, you know, and the Comprehensive Plan doesn't require those improvements to be there in order to have that future land use map changed. The rezoning would?
So if, on the Comprehensive Plan, though, would he, would he have to show that that right away has to be improved to the thirty-some foot?
No, the Comprehensive Plan does not require that.
I see.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to deny both items without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and is there discussion? I guess I have a question, and that is, in the original form that it's in, you recommend denial of, and you talked about denial as a rezone, but you almost sounded like you were talking about approval of the comprehensive plan amendment.
Which is what, yes, is what staff recommended.
Well, but, but the rezone and the comprehensive plan are both in item O, and it seems to me like if you're gonna recommend one and deny the other, then you'd either have to separate them and act individually on the comprehensive plan amendment and deny the rezone. It looks to me like you got this mixed up.
Well, no, that's my mistake on the agenda. I didn't read far enough down when I prepared that, so I forgot denial thinking it was O. But that's my mistake on the agenda.
Okay, but I'm not sure that- They still should be separated if you're gonna deny the rezone and approve the comprehensive plan, and that should've come that way from planning and zoning.
Well, we do that several, on several occasions, like the minor plat and subdivision regulation variances. That's actually two requests, it's just on the same property. So, we do combine it many times on the agenda as one item, but it's actually-
I can understand that if you're recommending approval or denial of both.
Well, even with subdivision regulation variances, many times we'll recommend approval of a portion of those subdivision regulations and denial of other ones. It's just the way staff has always done it. It's still being heard as one item, but you break it up as to a recommendation.
Well, I don't think we need to prolong this any further today, but it looks to me like it needs a little examination. But, okay, so we are going to deny both of them without prejudice?
Without prejudice. That gives him a year to come back, and by that time, maybe we'll know what's gonna happen up there, and then he can reapply for both.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I guess I don't quite understand what it is we're trying to accomplish with this motion. We don't like the, what do we wanna see different with the comprehensive plan?
Well, I guess the conversation kinda wasn't, and I thought where it was headed, that the people, where the board didn't like the difference of really passing one and denying the other. So, I thought if we put the denial of both items with a, without prejudice, that allows the applicant to come back within one year's time and reapply, which he probably intends to do anyway. And there's no denial or any acceptance of either one, and he can make his reapplication for both.
Well, will it require, if the applicant comes back in within a year to reapply, does he have to pay additional costs then to make that reapplication?
Just the advertising cost. The application cost is waived, but the advertising cost is not. He does have to do that, and he would have to send out the certified letters to his surrounding property owners also.
So, if he comes back in and makes just a application for amending the comprehensive plan, then he's gonna have to pay for advertising and sending out the registered letters to the property owners?
The comprehensive plan just requires, I believe, first-class mailings where the rezoning requires the certified return receipt mailings.
But he's, but there's an advertising connected with that as well?
Yes.
In the comprehensive plan? What does that advertising cost?
I believe it's around $94. It also depends on the length of the legal description.
And the Planning Commission, they recommended approving the comprehensive plan?
Yes, and denial of the rezoning request.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to make the motion to deny the rezone. And I'd like to get a vote on the denial of the rezone, and then we can deal with the comprehensive plan as a separate motion. So, my motion would be to deny the rezone.
I'll second that.
Are we on track as far as what we can do technically, Jay or Dan?
Yeah, you can vote on separately.
Okay. So, we have a substitute motion on item O. Everyone understand the motion? Any further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd be willing to make another motion. This one would be to approve the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
And I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the amendment to the comprehensive plan on item O. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'd say about it is that with my previous motion, I was trying to get things off a dead center, it looks like it worked.
Thank you. So, appreciate that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried with one vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports?
We did have the meetings up at Hill City and Keystone last week talking about disaster preparedness. People were very thankful that the county was willing to do that. We got some good ideas, and we had great attendance. I mean, sometimes you do these things, and you think, well, if we get half a dozen people, we'll be lucky. But our rooms were completely full, both places, and I guess that made it worth it. I think that, you know, we asked them to go out and tell their neighbors and tell them how they can go to the website for Pennington County, get further information if they weren't able to come to the, to the meeting. I was pleased, and I was really, really proud of the way that our department heads and staff presented. They did a great job.
Thank you.
I had two committee meetings this last couple of weeks. One was the emergency management advisory board meeting. And again, he reviewed many of the public awareness things that he's doing in that office, working on disaster plans, and not only in right here in Rapid City, but also in the outlying areas. He also reported that of the 36 warning sirens, we have 35 of them working. And I think when he first got started, there was only about six of them working. The one that isn't working is out on Parkview, and it got struck by lightning, and he's in the process of getting that one back on track. So, I think that emergency management's doing a great job. The other meeting that I had was the dispatch meeting, and we received information as to the progress on the two new tower sites. It's been talked about in the past, it sounds like that project is moving along. There's some funding that needs to be worked out, and, but, but it looks like we'll be able to put up two new transmitter towers that will help alleviate a lot of the dead spots in our emergency communications radio system. Thank you.
I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one item, it was the Thompson Blue concert last night that was open to the public, and a free concert put on by the United States Air Force. It was a fantastic concert, it was well, well-attended, and really some great entertainment that was given to the public there last night. We've had three base change-of-command ceremonies last week at the base. People are being sent to different locations. The last one we had was going to Japan. Buttons for the functions at the fair are now on sale at the Central States Fair Office. Couple of us attended the Emergency Management 101 class, which we had the other evening, and it was pretty, fairly well-attended, and had some really good information given out to us. And I did bring my book in, and it's in Holly Havitt, so if you wanna look at it, there's a lot of good information in there. And some of the information had to do with when you start keeping track of emergencies. And so, we'll just use highway for example. If Heinie gets called out in the middle of the night and says, hey, we had high water, and there's a cover gone, soon as he gets that call, he wants to start documenting his movements after that, in case he needs to go to FEMA. An update on the Dakota Fire, and of course, there was a gentleman that called and wanted me to show up at their change-of-command ceremony when the Type 2 team took it over. And those people that were here at the Dakota Fire were the best I've seen in my limited judgment of emergency management and things of that order. But they were more than willing to work with the county. They even offered to come in if we wanted to have a special meeting and give the county an update and the commission and, but the gentleman, and that's why we had him on the agenda here today, just in case he was still here, but now he's down at Edgemont. Nancy mentioned the Keystone and the Hill City fire meeting. And the one that was held in Hill City was at 5:30, and right after that, 7 o'clock, we had a healthy discussion on who the lousy contractor was on Deerfield Road from Hill City to Deerfield. And it turned out to be that the contractors that were running that show kept trying to put products in that the engineer would catch and make them tear it out and start over again. So, this thing has been going on for like two and a half years or so, and people finally had enough of it. And as Heinie mentioned here today, it looks like they had the first layer of hard surface down. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I don't have anything, either ready for public comment. Gail, thanks for your perseverance.
Gail Jorgensen again, for the record. It's been a long day, and I'll get you out of here as soon as I can, but I'm real concerned on the fire danger in the hills. I know you've covered most of it. There's one item that you have not covered, and it pertains to the motorcycles with no mufflers, straight pipes. There's a very high danger of carbon sparks getting in the ditch and starting a fire. And this, I think this is the year to look into that and go after that. I've always been against not enforcing the state law on motorcycle mufflers. It's already a law, and it's just not enforced in Pennington County. I don't know what Kevin Tom's idea is on it, but you have to have spark arresters if you're running a motorcycle or an ATV or a chainsaw in the hills. And since July 1st, they start mowing ditches in the county and state roads. And once you mow them, the green foliage is gone, and you got nothing but dead grass, or pretty well dead, since it's so dry. And I think you ought to be looking into that. It's just another, another way to keep from having unwanted forest fire. Second item is, do you know if the state has sold their airplane that the governor had? They were talking about it a couple of years ago. Does anyone know if that's gone? I would like to see the state, if they still own it, I'd like to see them sell it and put the money toward a tanker for the hills based in Rapid City. And you wanted information to go to the legislature for next year. And I think since we've got a nice, dry season, and the entire west is burning, that this would be something that should be done. Request money from the state to buy another plane to have out here, or anything you can do to get another tanker out here that's here all the time. So, those are the two items I have.
Appreciate that.
I still like to have input into the county business.
That's, that's good.
Have a safe 4th of July.
Thank you.
You too, and thank you, Gail.
Mr. Chair. And going along with that item that Gail mentioned, and the fire and the possible carbon sparks and things, I know that's a tremendous deal with the bikers, that they're coming down the road, riding that bike, smoking a cigarette. There's no place else to put it out in the ditch. And I presume that this DOT, Department of Transportation, probably is going to have their flashing signs out on the interstates and things, warning people about that. But I just wonder if we shouldn't remind them?
We could sure pass that on to our emergency people?
It's just as dangerous as throwing a cigarette out, because all it takes is that carbon, and if you've got a straight pipe muffler, there's no baffles in there to catch it. And the purpose of the baffles in a muffler is to slow that stuff down and make it move back and forth and up and down to where the spark, the carbon cools off and isn't red or ignited, so to ignite something. But when you got a straight pipe, it just goes right out the back, and you're asking for trouble, not enforcing that law.
Thank you. Okay.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session for personnel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.